Board of Commissioners meeting. At 5:00, we had a work session to finish up new campground discussions. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order, and our first item is our Pledge of Allegiance, or invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. We do not have one signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who would wish to lead us in prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Miller, if you'd like to come forward, please, that would be great. Thank you, sir. You can all stand.
You can bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day we've had, the great weather, and just the many blessings we've had this weekend and days about. It's been such a beautiful environment out there. Lord, we ask you to watch over each and every one of us tonight as we come together, work together for the common good, and, Lord, we pray that you bless and keep each of us as we speak the truth and honesty and work for the betterment of our community. Lord, please bless each and every one of us and keep us safe on our trip home. In your name we pray.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. The next item is the approval of agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda that we need to make?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to have Item B, PB 21-15, Wind's Sweat Pines Phase 3, and Item C, PB 21-17, Sam Miller moved from the agenda and added to our November the 1st meeting at 6:00 PM. I feel like until we meet with our Finance Director and the School Board, which meetings are coming up in the next few weeks, I don't think it would be prudent for us to hear these cases until we find out the situation of our county.
So you're gonna make that motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to remove, under public hearings, Item A and C. Do I have a second?
She said B.
I'm sorry, my apologies. Item B and C from the public hearings. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussions on this?
Just to be clear, you really want to wait till we talk about the financial implications of the new schools and where they stand currently? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And also, aren't we expecting the numbers? When we got the schedule for the, from the school system about when they would give us updates, I believe the first update comes at the end of September, so we should be getting those numbers, I believe, when we meet with the School Board. So I also think it's prudent to move these to our November meeting.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on the matter?
I'd just like to note that these people that are signed up for the agenda have showed up here. They have people that they're paying to represent them and do stuff, and I just, you know, I just don't think it's, they weren't given, what, 30 minutes notice? I just think it's kind of disrespectful to them and the money that they've paid for people that they've had come here, professionals. I don't think that's fair to them. That's just my two cents.
Any further discussions? Okay, here are no discussions. I'll ask for a vote. All in favor of removing Items B and C under public hearings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Mr. Etheridge, I didn't get your response.
No.
No, okay. The vote was a tie, so that being the case, the motion does not carry. Okay, so I'll, I guess I'll ask then for a...
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to suggest that we discuss these further when we get to these items and move to approve the current agenda.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion on the approval? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Five to one. Okay, thank you. All right. Next item is public comment. This is a time for the public. We allow three minutes of uninterrupted time for citizens or anyone who'd like to come and address the board on any matters, discussions, and we'll intently listen and to your comments. And we have, right now, the first person we have signed up for public comment. And just be mindful that there will be a green light when you start, and we'll get a yellow signifying you about 30 minutes to wrap up your thoughts, and then the red light will indicate your time is up. And we have Mr. Glenn Hines. Please state your name and address. When you come up, please, for the record.
All right. Hello. I'm Glenn Hines at 3152 Carritoke Highway, Currituck, North Carolina.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Currently, I'm a North Carolina Certified Waste Water Installer and Inspector, and I'm also appointed to the North Carolina Onsite Certification Board. The Certification Board's only job is to protect the public health and environment. All wastewater contractors, health specialists, engineers, soil scientists must abide by the all-important North Carolina 1900 rules, which are governed on all installations of all on-site wastewater systems. Some of these rules, such as the 18-inch water table, are strictly enforced. Additionally, some of these rules are forced onto every state by the EPA. Any environmental health specialist, engineer, soil scientist, and now soil evaluator are the only licensed inventors who can determine where this water table separation is. Field is only placed on individual lots to meet this 18-inch water table separation. At no time is there any lot in North Carolina immune to this water table restriction. No other county ordinance can deviate from this 18-inch water table separation. Currituck County's fill requirement conflicts with the 1900 rules in that the 18-inch water table separation. There is no mention in the 1900 rules that state that Currituck County is immune from these rules. There is no county building department or planning department that can supersede these rules. The legal authority for any fill placement in Currituck County is Alamo Regional Health Service, which estimated almost 1,000 lots per year that is currently being filled every year in Currituck County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. Before we get through, is there anyone who wished to speak a public comment that did not sign up? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to invite the last person I had up here was Tamara Kugler.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Tamara Kugler, and I am privileged to be the Director of Travel and Tourism for Currituck County, and I'm also privileged to be the manager of what I consider to be one of the best, if not the best, tourism teams in North Carolina, and I'm going to tell you why. Jeff Schwarzenberg and I, last week, attended the North Carolina Travel Industry Association Tourism Leadership Conference. One of the highlights of that conference is the awarding of destination marketing awards. There's three categories. There's large market, medium-sized market, and small market. Because of our budget, we compete in the large market, so we are playing, or we are up against the big boys like Asheville, Greensboro, Raleigh, Durham, Charlotte. So we're kind of lumped in with some of these big players. So I want to tell you what we won. We were very surprised. There's three, there's two different categories. So each, each market is awarded either a platinum or a gold award. So our first award for marketing achievement was the gold award. Now, this was for group marketing, and we won this award along with our five sister counties, which are Chawan, Pasquotank, Proquemmons, Camden, and Dare County, for the African-American experience of northeastern North Carolina. So all six of us share in this gold award. So we were, we were very surprised that we won it. We weren't expecting it, so that was even a bigger bonus. Our next award is one that I'm very, very proud of, and that is the Achievement Award. It's platinum for out-of-market leisure marketing. And we won this award for Simply Corolla, North Carolina, Find Yourself Here. And with the global pandemic dramatically affecting travelers' sentiment and behavior in 2020, the primary goal of this marketing campaign was to position Corolla, North Carolina, and the Greater Currituck Outer Banks as the premier drive-to destination that provides prospective leisure travelers and families with an opportunity to hit the road and find themselves literally and figuratively here in Corolla. So we won the platinum award for that particular segment. What we really weren't expecting, and weren't even paying attention when they were calling it out, was we actually won Best in Show. So out of all of the 80 entries for travel, for this particular conference, we won Best in Show. So we are so proud, and I just wanted to let you know, I wanted to share this with you before it gets out there in the wider public. And just, just know, I want to lift my team up, and that's both our full-time staff and our part-time staff, because they're the ones that make this all possible. They're the ones that are out there, their faces are with visitors. They're out there showing them the wonderful things that our county has to offer and working pretty darn hard to get these awards for us. So I just want to let you know what we've done and how very, very proud I am, not only of my team, but of my county and my Board of Commissioners, which supports us every step of the way. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, before you get gone, I think you got one thing wrong.
What's that?
Those, those big boys are competing against you, not us competing against them. You keep, the trophy case is getting kind of full over there, so keep up the good work. But I know you guys put a lot of effort into it, and thank you and all your staff for everything they do for us to...
Yeah, thank you. That, you know, we're very fortunate in that we do all of our stuff in-house, so we don't use any of the big marketing firms or any of the public, public relations firms. So we're able to do it all in-house, and that means that we're able to talk to each other constantly, to constantly bounce ideas off of each other. And do you like this? Do you like, do you like this? No, I don't like this. So that gives us a little bit of a leg up, I think, in some respects, because we are able to be with each other and talk to each other every day. So thanks again.
Ms. Kugler, before you go, congratulations and thank you. Just a technicality, could you please just, for the record, state your address?
Oh, my address is Tamara Kugler, and I live at 103 Charleston Drive in Grandy, North Carolina. Go Grandy.
Thank you. Again, I had no other one signed up for public comment. Anyone else again? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to get into the Commissioners' report. And this evening, I'm going to start off to my left this evening, and start with Commissioner Jarvis.
Thank you. I just want to commend our staff and particularly our Airport Director for a very successful, wonderful aviation day, which occurred the last Saturday in September. It was a beautiful day, a lot of history, a lot of exciting events, a lot of food. It was just a wonderful event, and I just want to commend them for putting on such a great event. I really enjoyed myself out there. It was, it was more than I expected it to be. I lost track of how many airplanes and just so many wonderful things going on. And finally, I just want to send a thank you to Mr. Brian Innis for making my day and restoring my faith in humans today. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. Commissioner Etheridge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Saturday, Commissioner Owen Etheridge and myself attended Currituck County Farm Days. It was a celebration of the area's farm heritage. It was very well-attended, and I just want to thank the cooperative extension and everyone who made it a great success. But most of all, I want to thank the farmers here in our county. Mr. Etheridge is a farmer. We don't thank them enough. They're the ones who feed us. So a big thank you to the farmers here in Currituck County. Also, Director of Social Service Samantha Herd and myself have been discussing fundraising ideas for Operation Santa. Yes, Christmas will soon be here. It's hard to believe. And we'd like to propose a fundraising idea that hopefully will get county employees excited about this program. We would like to allow county employees to wear blue jeans on Fridays for a fee they would have to pay, and it would be for a limited time only. And of course, the blue jeans have to be appropriate for the workplace. They wouldn't be holes all in them. They would have to be appropriate. They would pay $2 to wear the blue jeans, and they get to do it on Friday, beginning October the 8th and running through the 10th, which would be a total of 10 weeks. This would help Operation Santa generate more revenue to support local children in Currituck County, and we believe it would be a big morale for the employees here in the county, too. And since this is part of our dress code, I didn't know if the Board would have to temporarily modify the dress code for something like this to be done.
I think you would need to, in order to modify the personnel policy in which the dress code occurs. So, yes.
Can we do it now, or?
When again is this to start?
We're hoping to start it this coming Friday. That would give us 10 weeks. That would be $20 out of each employee if they wanted to wear jeans.
Matt, I think if you want to get that directive now, of course, we will abide by the Board's directive.
I, can I ask, is the Board, would the Board entertain a, I guess, do we need to make that into a motion?
Yes.
Would the Board entertain making a motion to allow, well...
To modify the dress code for, allow employees on Fridays, starting on October the 8th, running through the 10th of December, to wear jeans when they pay $2.
Per week?
Per week, yeah.
To go to?
Operation Santa.
Okay, so we have a motion for staff.
I'll second it.
Motion to second. Any discussions on the matter?
I have been trying for years to do something like this, because, you know, it would give the employees some pride in trying to help worthy causes here in the county, and I commend you for bringing it forward. And, yes, we need to adopt this, and I wouldn't say do it every week, every week, but maybe once a month and let them pay a fee.
Right now...
Well, let's don't get carried away.
No, no, right now, it runs through December.
Thinking 10th.
December 10th, yes.
Put the idea out there.
Yeah, understood, but right now, the motion is for Friday, starting this Friday through December 10th. Do you have a...
Well, I don't want to dime anybody out, but I've seen a lot of county employees wear jeans on Friday. So I'm just...
Well, you should turn them over to the dress code, please.
Yeah, I'm not doing that.
Go get them. Get their two bucks.
I deal with enough. I feel like Better Off Dead, that movie. I want my $2.
Yes.
Any other discussions on this? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll go ahead and start this Friday. Thank you, Ms. Etheridge. You got anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you guys know, and people who watched the last meeting, I was not at the last meeting. I was out gallivanting around the country. I spent three weeks traipsing across the country to Colorado and back, and as Dorothy said, there's no place like home. I'm glad to be back in Currituck. But while I was gone, something came up about Wild Horse Tours, which seems to happen about four or five times a year. And yes, I own one of those businesses. And I'm not going to delve into that, but a lot of stuff was said that it's a conflict of interest for me to own that business and be a commissioner, and this is on social media. So I thought I'd take a moment to address that and talk about this board and its makeup. We have a school teacher that has taught 20-plus years of students.
30.
30-plus years.
Started at 7.
30-plus years of students. Selena's, you know, base brought us a completely different dimension to the board, and the educational component that we don't understand, we don't deal with, right? Ms. Kitty's worked in and around our county government for a very long time as well. She brings a different depth of knowledge to this board. I think five of us are private business owners or of some degree, and we all bring different things to the board. Owen's a farmer. He's had multiple jobs, God knows how many years in government here in Currituck County. Kevin's law enforcement and has his own small business on the side doing landscaping. He knows everyone in the county. Just ask him, he'll tell you. Commissioner Payman, our chairman, has an HVAC business and does business with the county, and that is not a conflict of interest.
And was a...
There are rules that govern that. He's allowed to make a certain amount under those rules and has to apply, go through the bidding process like anyone else would have to do to be awarded these contracts. I happen to be in a Wild Horse Tour business currently, but I have owned or helped manage my father's hotel for over a decade. I've owned restaurants. I've owned beach stores, jet skis, kayaks, you name it, on the Outer Banks. I have been involved in just about every, every aspect of that industry. So I bring a different level of knowledge, and I think it is a great reflection, this particular board, and probably every board, of the people that are in this county. That is what a board should be. It should represent all kinds of industry within the county, and you either work for government, you work for yourself, or you work for somebody. So you're going to be one of those three things, no matter what. And so I just think it's, I just want to set the record straight about what is and what is not a conflict of interest. For us to be up here and own businesses, it is pretty much expected that's going to happen, and that you would conduct business within your county as well, and give back through those experiences to the county in the form of service on this board. And so I just wanted to let people know that it is not a conflict of interest. What is a conflict of interest is if an item comes before this Board of Commissioners, and we decide to vote or take that up. If it's in my case, as happened last year, I had something come up to the board, and I had to step out of the room and leave the room so that I did not have any kind of influence on this Board of Commissioners. And I don't think there's a requirement that we actually leave the room. It's something that has just been the practice, and we do out of respect, so I'm not just sitting there staring at you in the face, and you have to make a decision based on me looking at you. So it is something we do. Commissioner Payman decided to leave the room, and we decided on a contract for him. If Kevin wanted to have a contract to do something with grounds maintenance around the county, he would again have to recuse himself and not vote on these things. So that is when you end up in a conflict of interest. And many times, when we vote on things, if any of us that own businesses in this county have a perceived conflict of interest, we'll actually ask the county attorney to expound on that and tell us why we do or do not have a conflict of interest. There are times where, yes, it looks like it's a conflict of interest, but the law actually requires us to vote on stuff. And did I get yelled at about the mic?
No, no.
I'm on, okay. All right. She didn't come out and give me the sign, so...
No, no.
So anyway, I just, I just, I really felt like it was a good opportune time to talk about conflicts of interest with board members and what we do and what we bring to the board and to the citizens of this county and our, and our, and our different experiences and background. And that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner White. First of all, let me just, and I should have said this earlier, that the Vice Chairman, Commissioner Beaumont, was not here this evening. He had some time off that he had taken and excused himself, so I just wanted to let the audience know that. As far as myself, just, you know, this is getting into fire season. We've had some down the county, we've had a pretty big, I guess, brush fire, a good little size that, that was just recently. We've had some structure fires. We have them all over the county. You're going to be turning on fireplaces. Make sure you get those cleaned and checked and have some inspections done on your, on your equipment, and just support your fire departments. The volunteers, this county still is supported by the volunteer fire, mostly volunteer firefighters. They could use your support, showing up, lending a hand, or anything you can help, or just say thank you for what they do, because they're called out all times of the day, weekends, holidays, nights, the pagers go off, and they're out there trying to protect our community. And I just want to thank them again, the traffic issues we've had. So just keep them in your thoughts and prayers. All of our first responders and our dispatchers, it's been a busy year, and it doesn't look like it's letting up at all. Other than that, that's all I had to say for this evening. Commissioner McCourt?
I don't even remember the exact night, but I know because I had to work the following morning. Myself, Chairman Payman, Commissioner Etheridge, County Manager slash County Attorney, Ike McCree, attended Ray Matusco swearing-in, and the sheriff, actually my boss, I forgot that. Hope he's not watching. Sheriff Matt Biker attended as well. We went to watch Ray Matusco, who is our Clerk of Superior Court in Currituck County. He's a guy that you don't like if you get jury duty. So, but he is, he was sworn in for, as the President of all the clerks of the state of North Carolina, 100 counties. So he's the President from our very own Currituck County. So it was a nice dinner that we attended, myself and the sheriff and the county attorney manager. We, you know, came back home after that because I had the privilege of working the next morning. But it was, it was an awesome event for Ray. It was very, there was 63 clerks out of 100 counties were there to represent. They had training all week, and then they had that, and it was very nice. Chief Justice Newby was there, as well as our very own representative, who, wishing him well. I guess he had an appendix. It was on Facebook, so you can say it. Bobby's appendix ruptured or whatever. I had that surgery a couple of months ago. Bobby Hannig was there as well. So it was, it was a lot of, it was a, it was a big deal, and it was a nice event that we got to attend. Saturday, Aviation Day, I did not attend, but I did help set up. So I had a thing I had to do. I helped William. William does an awesome job at the airport. As to my knowledge, the airport has never profited in Currituck County. It makes money. So, good job, William. Keep it up. And Aviation Day, I want to say they had right at 1,000 people attend. It was awesome. Yesterday, I attended, as well as, I'm not going to say work because it was volunteered, for the Moyac Fire Department Community Day. The Sheriff's Department was there. They had a bunch of vendors. We did a dinner kid. I tried to get Commissioner Etheridge's wife to have him come over, and I was going to fingerprint Owen so he could have one of those little cards, and he would not for taking it. It kind of made me mad, but it's all good. Yeah. But like I said, we had, we had probably over 1,000 people attend that. The fire department did a real, and this is a cop compliment and fire guys, they did a great job. I mean, they really did. The forestry was there, wildlife was there, the Highway Patrol was there, the Sheriff's Office was there, obviously, EMTs. It was, it was a nice event. There was tons of food vendors. I think we did 49 kids for the dinner kid, myself, the sheriff, and our IT, Tanya Capps, who set all that up. It was an awesome event. And like I said, there was a ton of people there. Final thing to touch on what Commissioner White said, too, like, you know, like, we hear that all the time of, oh, his company does that, or whatever, where they say on, on Bob's business. One thing, and I will say this for, not just for him, as well as for other business owners, because I know Chairman Payman as well and myself, we donate. I just wrote a check for a golf tournament for, sponsored a team for something for the schools. I mean, we, we have businesses as well as, you know, we, Commissioner White, the summer programs through the Sheriff's Office that we do for underprivileged children or, or anybody that signs up. There's kids that have lived in this county... There's kids that have lived in this county their whole life that have never been to the beach. He donated horse tours. They paid nothing. That cost him thousands of dollars because he could have had people in those seats paying. You know, and people attack him on social media and people, I mean, I love it on social media because they wouldn't say it to your face. I, I, I love going down there and saying that. But like you said, I mean, there's, you know, yeah, we have businesses, whatever, and this, and we donate, and like I said, I, I, you donated, I want to say, two tours that summer.
We did this year. Previous year was like five.
Yeah. So, I mean, like I said, that's, you know, where he could have, whether it be, I don't know, sixteen people in a seat paying, whatever the, the fee is, he's giving that away. You know, and I mean, and then people are attacking him on Facebook who've lived here for two years, you know? I mean, and I'm, I'm glad they live here. That's awesome, but like you said, I mean, do your research before you pound people on Facebook or insult their families or whatever. But that's just a, but like you said, I mean, we all, uh, Chairman Payman does a ton of stuff for Currituck kids, you know, and donates and this, as well as, um, you know, Commissioner. I mean, we, you know, like you said, I mean, we live here. We're involved in the community. We try to help out. You know, and like you said, yeah, he has, it's a business, but that's, you know, how he feeds his family and pays his bills. And like you said, I mean, we're doing everything that we're supposed to do by the book, because if we don't, then it's an issue, so. But I just wanted to touch on that, and I was, like I said, I mean, he, he takes a beating sometimes pretty hard. But, um, like I said, be safe on the roads, drive sensible. Three hundred and eleven people got school zone speeding tickets in the month of September. Three-eleven, you heard that correct. That was from the Sheriff's Office, three-eleven. So people are still, there's signs, and we have some actually new signs that are coming this month. They almost got canceled. We made it barely through a school grant that myself and Sergeant Jesse Taylor worked on, um, and they would have been here if it wasn't for COVID. And they would have been here before school started. That was the plan. That's why we did it. Like you said, they were supposed to be here August twentieth, and they're going to be here like October twentieth. So you're going to have more. They have cameras on them. They're state-of-the-art. And like I said, if anybody sees them, they didn't cost the county anything, so don't, you know, be calling and saying we wasted money because they were free. It was on a grant from paperwork, sweat, and equity of, of, of people going in and doing that. And there's one more thing I'm going to forget.
If you do, we'll circle back.
We can circle back. No, we, we're not going to say circle back. We're not saying, "Oh, final thing, here it is, COVID." I did bring up COVID. I didn't think that was coming back, but there is a booster shot. Um, I will Saturday or Thursday from nine to three, um, all regional health services requested. I was the guy that got to get people to come out from the Sheriff's Department to do the previous clinics. It's going to be at the YMCA, so if you want a booster shot, um, they're available nine to three at the...
Only for the Pfizer.
Yeah, only for the Pfizer. First booster to, I'm, I'm aware of.
Yes.
So only for the Pfizer, so that's not the Moderna ones. If you got the Pfizer, there's a booster shot from nine to three, um, at the YMCA. It's going to be super similar to the ones that, the clinics that we ran before. Pfizer was only in the county for two days. So I don't think we're going to have a lot of people, but I think we gave out maybe four hundred and some Pfizer shots, I guess.
But it's if you...
But like I said, but if you want to come, Thursday, I'll be there smiling, um, nine to three, um, directing traffic if it's, if it's busy, but at the Y, so that's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner McCourt, and Commissioner Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Commissioner McCourt said, we attended the swearing-in of Ray Matusco. Quite an honor for Ray and quite an honor for Currituck County. First time someone from northeast North Carolina has been sworn in in that position. As Commissioner Jarvis said, Aviation Day, it was good to see her out there, and the other, uh, Commissioner Beaumont was there. And a lot of kids. Interest in aviation was piqued by the flights that they were able to take. And I saw people from Camden, from, uh, Prequemans County, Pasquetank. So it was a regional type of event, and William Nelson and his staffs to be commended for what they did. As Commissioner Etheridge said, the Farm Festival on Saturday was very well-attended. I was talking to a gentleman that had brought a tractor out there that my dad and granddaddy had one just like it. And I grew up driving that tractor, and it was fun just to look at that. But to see all the little kids there looking at the farm equipment and whatnot, because we lose sight of our heritage and tradition without events like this to remind us of, of just where we came from. And I look at those tractors that were made back in the fifties and sixties and wondered how in the world they formed. And we can hardly do it with the equipment that we have today. Yesterday, I had the privilege of attending the Community Day. Chief Mike Lane and the Moyoc Volunteer Fire Department did an excellent job, and they very well-attended compared to last year. But that was the first time, and, um, I commend them and shout out for everything that they do. I was, wrote up to Greenbrier Farms to their Halloween stuff the other night and was talking to a Chesapeake Police Officer that is going to be building a house in Currituck. And he said, "The volunteers and the way that people in Currituck have treated him," he said, "I made the right decision. I was either build a house in Chesapeake or build one in Currituck." And he said, "I chose Currituck." And lastly, I've got on pink tonight because it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we have all know someone, family, friends, that have been affected by that. It's a horrible disease, and, uh, we should thank God that, you know, we are making advances, medical science, in treating that disease. And, uh, I urge each and every one to remember the purpose of this month in, in terms of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge.
Can I add one quick thing? One more thing, um, sorry. I looked at my sheet. The, um, Christmas parade has been canceled due to COVID recently. Um, you can attend a professional football game and a college football game, and you're outdoors, and, you know, I guess COVID's not spreading that way. So, uh, I'm in the, the midst and the talk of doing the Christmas parade again. I talked to the county manager, we're just, uh, about that. The FOP puts that on every year. Lieutenant Midget, who used to be with us, is now the Clerk of Court in Camden. So, um, that would fall probably towards myself and some of the other guys. But like I said, I would like to get some things back to normalcy here in Currituck County, and it is outside. Um, I'm going to give an update at the next Commissioners' Meeting if we can put that together. But I'd look, like to, uh, um, do the county Christmas parade again. We have roughly close to a thousand people. And it's, it's so long, the, the whole parade, that people can stand on both sides and be outside, and it is an outdoor event. So, like I said, they can go attend a Redskins football game or Washington Football Team. And I just saw where the SEC fined Kentucky for beating Florida $250,000 for storming the field. But, but like I said, it's an outside event. We're going to try to put that back together.
We look forward to your report coming out on that.
Well, we better hope and pray that Dr. Fauci doesn't cancel Christmas, as he said yesterday. It might be the case.
But he's, he's not allowed in Currituck County. I'll go and put that out there.
All right, thank you, everyone. Okay, so next we have, uh, our County Manager slash County Attorney report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I've reported to you in the management report on Friday the status of several lawsuits. Uh, I would, I would add to that, that last week, the North Carolina Court of Appeals dismissed, uh, the Latendra, uh, appeal from the Superior Court's decision, two, two decisions by two different Superior Court judges, that she was not compliant with previous Court of Appeals orders and entered orders requiring her to comply. We're currently evaluating what that means in light of the pending federal piece of that case, and I'll report that back to you as to what our next steps might be. Parks and Recreation Director Jason Weeks reports to me today that the Knott's Island Playground installation started today, and it should be complete in two to three weeks. So for those of, who utilize that area at Knott's Island, uh, just be patient. You're going to have a new playground shortly. And then lastly, continuing to add onto the accolades of our airport and our fine airport manager, William Nelson. Um, he forwarded to me today some numbers regarding fuel cells from, uh, the years 2016 through 2020, from January to October of those years. And it averaged to sixty-hundred, sixty-eight thousand gallons of fuel per year. Uh, this same period of time this year, from first of January to first of October, uh, we have sold 105,187 gallons of fuel, doubling, uh, in essence, the amount of fuel sold annually over the last five years, which is an indication of the traffic coming in out of our airport. And I think it, uh, goes to a great extent to the personality, uh, and talent of our airport manager, who is doing a great job in pulling aircraft into our airport that either did not know about our airport in the past or had never, uh, seen fit to stop here and now say they will not stop anywhere else. Uh, we also are hoping to have, uh, in the next few months, some exciting things to bring back to the board as the interest in our airport continues to increase regularly. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
He said about the airport, the, uh, the other day, I was, uh, and actually Kevin was in there when he met the gentleman. He owns multiple golf courses in Virginia. Met a guy here, flew and bought a plane at our airport, and he knew William and raved on William. And I believe he's going to try to get one of his hangars, one of our hangars, to keep his plane here. I mean, that just, I mean, William's known everywhere in the airport community.
Thank you for the reports. Our next item is our administrative reports, and the first item is the presentation of a donation to the Currituck Kids. Um, I do not see a member of the Executive Board in the audience. Must have missed somebody. I am on the Currituck Kids Executive Board, so I will stand in, for the presentation and make sure that gets to the Currituck Kids. And, um, just real quick before the presentation, just a quick background. Currituck Kids was established in 2008 to address needs of kids in Currituck County. So all the money and donations that Currituck Kids receives stays in this county, helps the school systems, helps, um, any, any kid, a child that's identified, whether it's medicine, clothes, glasses, uniforms, help them with camps. Anything we can do to make that child a, a, you know, feel like they're a good part of this community. And, um, so, and I've been with this board to 2009. It's been very rewarding. So, um, anytime we can get donations of any amount, it, um, it's always a blessing to know it's going to be going to help our kids in this, and it stays in this county. It doesn't leave this county, and there's no administrative cost to this board. So it's, um, it's well-deserved. So if that be the case, I'd ask, uh, I think Commissioner Owen, you're going to, did you want to tell a little bit about this before we, up there, right here in the mics, or?
Well, real quick, um, at the recent North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference, they always have, I'll call it a trade show, various vendors. And I've always entered into contests that they had, and I entered into one with Boomerang Design and won their door prize, and the door prize was a check to go to a charity in the county. And the first charity I thought of was Currituck Kids. Very worthwhile organization that helps a lot of kids in this county. And if you're looking for somewhere to donate some money, they would appreciate anything and everything you can do.
If you are, we can come up here and present to you real quick in front if you'd like, and get a picture or something.
On behalf of Currituck Kids, I want to thank you for the donation.
Very well.
Oh, all right. Okay, thank you. Thanks again.
Okay, the next item on our administrative report is our, an annual report presentation from the North Carolina Forest Service. And I believe we have the Currituck Ranger, Aaron Bishop, and the Assistant County Ranger, Will Rose. If you please come on up and introduce yourself and... Thank you for coming out this evening. Thank you for coming out this evening.
Yep, it's good to be here. So I'm Aaron Bishop, the Currituck County Ranger, and I'm here with Will Rose, the Assistant County Ranger. I got our yearly report.
Thank you.
Is it possible to put a PowerPoint up?
This PowerPoint? My pen just like broke and shattered.
I see these guys at the, at the new Public Safety Building. I know their names.
All right, well, it's good to be here. Today, I came to talk about, uh, what we can do for the county, just to reiterate everything we can provide. So, our program overview. So, out of all a hundred counties participate in our program, um, and Currituck pays forty percent of the annual budget for our services. We have two full-time positions, May County Ranger and Will Rose is the Assistant County Ranger, and two initial attack Type Six engines. One tractor that's shared between Pasquetank, Camden, and Currituck. Um, and then we also have additional resources we can call, uh, heavy equipment and aviation if we would have any large wildfires. Our job duties, we do forest management for the landowners of the county. If anybody needs help managing their timber, we can write plans for them, um, for a sustainable wood source. Uh, we also do management plans for wildlife and aesthetics and other areas. Um, we do forest protection for our fire control, uh, insect and disease. We do flights every year to check to see if there are any major, um, areas of dying trees, and we'll go on the ground and check to make sure that we don't have southern pine beetle killing a bunch of our pine trees. Uh, we do information and education programs. Probably seen us lately. We've been at the Farm Festival, Aviation Day. We brought our seats in and did a drop for everyone, so it's pretty cool to see. Uh, we also do emergency response, um, and I'll go further detail of all, all we can do for that. So for forest management, we'll do timber exams, management plans, forestation services, cost share programs, prescribed burning, and water quality. Uh, for forest protection, we got fire control, law enforcement, multi-agency coordination, and pest control. This goes into details about what we can do and provide for the fire departments. These classes listed are all federally recognized classes that we can provide to our fire departments, uh, for free. Um, so they're really good trainings that we can provide for them. On average, there are 4,300 wildfires in North Carolina per year. For information and education, we can do school programs, community organization, landowner meetings and tours, and several different other information and education programs. We like to try to get out to the community, uh, and help, and especially with our Smokey programs, uh, to help prevent wildfires. For emergency response, we can be utilized for hurricanes, ice storms, floods, and search and rescues. We're here if you need us, pretty much. We'll be here and try to do our best. We've helped out with several hurricanes over the years. I think the last one, Dorian, hit, we did some pumping operations to clean out the beaches up in Corolla. An average year, wildfires consume about 24,900 acres in North Carolina. And our causes of wildfire, um, are thirty-eight percent from debris burning, and not too many are actually caused by lightning or natural factors. So our information and education programs are something we try to hit pretty hard here in Currituck. So the equipment we can use, uh, to protect lives and property are our brush trucks. This is the new brush trucks we're going to. They got mechanics... new brush trucks we're going to, they got mechanics bodies, Type 6 engine, can hold 150 gallons of water, and we can get a lot of places, usually when I get to a fire, the fire department has a big engine, we can get to places they can't get, especially if they're back in the woods. And if we can't get it with our engine, we have our dozers that we can bring in, and we can plow line around it, get rid of the fuels, and we also have the ability to call in aviation. So this is a picture from Aviation Day, the two here on the left are our seats, they can hold 800 gallons of water each, and the lead plane leads them in to make drops on fires. If we have any big fires, we have that resource to call in and make drops and knock down a fire, especially if it's threatening neighborhood. Here's a picture of a seat making a retardant drop. And then we also have helicopters that can do bucket drops, and they can hold a decent amount of water, and really good at doing return drops really quickly, versus a seat would have to drop at the airport, fill up off a hydrant and come back. A bucket drop, they can keep filling up and hitting a fire.
How much does that bucket hold?
I'm not too sure, we have different sized buckets, so it really depends on what size bucket they put on. But, thank you, any questions?
Just a comment.
Yes.
Thank you, I was at Aviation Day, and we spoke, and we really appreciate you supporting that program and all you do in Currituck County.
Thank you.
Thank you as well, you guys do a great job. Who, man, who was the one that was unfortunate after wearing the Smokey, the Bear costume yesterday in the heat? That's probably why he's sitting down in the back still.
That was actually Smokey, there's no, there's no costume.
Yeah, there's no, I got you.
And I'll just say, you know...
It was hot.
It was hot, he did have to go sit down in the shade for a bit.
I'm also a volunteer fire when I can, but I know I've seen you guys do a lot of chainsaw safeties for us, and we've had some training with filling the airplanes at the airport. Those are some, some good experiences, so I just want to thank you for what you do for the volunteer fire departments as well. And thank you for coming up, anybody have any other comments or questions? If not, thank you again for coming up for this report, we appreciate everything you do for the county, I know the county appreciates what you do for them, so thanks again, and keep up the good work.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, would this board entertain a five-minute break before we get into the public hearings? Okay, all right, let's take about a five-minute, try to be here back at seven o'clock if we can, I'll take recess. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene our Board of Commissioners meeting, and the next item we had was public hearings, and the first item is PB 21-19, Outer Banks Ventures Incorporated LUP Amendment, request to amend the future land use classification map from conservation to full service designation, properly located at the southern end of Monterey Shores Planned Unit Development adjacent to Malia Drive in Corolla, and I believe we have Jenny Turner gonna present that for us.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting a change to the 2006 future land use map. The property is located adjacent to Malia Drive, across from the Monterey Plaza Shopping Center, Albocore Street, to the north, you can see there's some properties there that are Monterey Shores homes. To the east, there are some commercial uses out and front, including the miniature golf, Corolla miniature golf, and bumper cars, I believe, or, I think it's bumper cars. To the south is the Timbuktu Shopping Center, and of course, to the west is the Currituck The property is zoned SFO, single-family residential Outer Banks with PUD Planned Unit Development overlay, it's part of the Monterey Shores Planning Unit Development, which is a legacy district in Corolla, and is subject to the Monterey Shores amended sketch plan and special use permit. Those plans, the sketch plans for PUDs, layout, uses, commercial areas, density, open space areas, and things like that, so this particular parcel currently has approximately one acre of commercial designation, and almost 35 acres of designated as utility open space. Current land use plan classifies the site as mostly conservation with .4 acres designated as full service. To better illustrate this requested change to the future land use map, you can see this plan here, and I don't know how those colors are showing up for you. Okay.
It's also on page 27.
Yeah, right, in your agenda packet, 27 and 28, those maps are in there, but you can see the changes here, currently, there's just this little bit here that's full service on the parcel, and here's the proposed change to the future land use map, and this change actually follows a certified wetland delineation that the applicant has certified by the Army Corps of Engineers. So a little bit of background on why you're hearing this request, I don't think the board typically hears a lot of specifically land use plan amendments. The applicant came in for amended sketch plan, special use permit for the Monterey Shores Planning Unit Development, to develop the upland area of the parcel, again, as I said, of which about an acre is commercial, a little more than acre. And so they're proposing to reallocate the commercial designation for commercial units with upper-story dwelling units, and request 36 dwelling units within the parcel. And so, it's a little bit unusual in this situation, in that the zoning is already in place, it's already zoned SFO with PUD overlay, it's already part of Monterey Shores Planned Unit Development and subject to the amended sketch plan and special use permit. So to amend that, as an evidentiary hearing, a quasi-judicial decision of this board, which you're familiar with those hearings, it's where the board sits as judge, takes in evidence, and makes findings of fact. So, in doing that and reviewing this conservation designation of the land use plan, staff felt that it would be a very difficult decision of this board to make the finding that this particular proposal that they came in with would be consistent with the land use plan with the conservation designation. So that's why the applicant is through this legislative process requesting that the land use plan be amended firstly, so the board can hear the subsequent amended sketch plan special use permit at a later date. I think I covered that.
We wouldn't know, we can't see what you're looking at.
Oh, you can't see the slides?
No.
All right, okay. I do want to note, the property is located within the Corolla subarea of the land use plan, and the emphasis for the land use plan for that area is predominantly medium residential density, with minimal commercial located in clusters. And then with the Monterey Shores PUD, the overall PUD has a maximum of three dwelling units per acre within the PUD. I will note in your packet, in the staff reports, pages 17 and 18, the applicant has provided some statements of justification, those were inserted into the staff report directly from the applicant's application. I did want to provide a little bit of background about the future land use map and how it was So modeling software was used to generate an environmental composite map, you can see the orangish map there on your screen, as well as a land suitability analysis, and those models used many factors, including soil suitability, wetlands, flood zones, fragile areas, land use, transportation, infrastructure, and so on, to determine development potential or suitability of the land. Step two there, those maps were then used as base maps overlaid with other data such as aerial photography, property lines, land use, and zoning. And then ultimately, you come out with a land, future land use classification map, which is where you take those land use classification definitions and the model data and other... The staff report does mention the 2000, the Imagine Currituck Plan, that's a draft plan that has not yet been adopted. I did want to include a little bit of detail regarding that plan, the land suitability analysis was done in a very similar way to the 2006 land use plan. The wet, there was wetland, you can see, here's a zoomed-in area of the future land use map that came out of the land suitability analysis, this is the draft map. And then zooming further into the parcel, you can see that the actual wetland delineation that was provided was used and incorporated into the future land use map for the Imagine Currituck Plan. So we had better data, we had that parcel-specific data, so we did incorporate it into these maps. We don't always have that parcel-level data to use.
And is this roughly, the future land use map roughly where, overlay what he's trying, it kind of follows, it looks like it's following the same contour?
Very, yes.
Okay.
Like the wetland delineation line.
Yeah.
So, in deciding whether to amend the land use plan, the board can consider the similar factors that you do when you weigh, that you weigh regarding text amendments, is it consistent with the land use plan, is it in conflict with the ordinance, is it required by change conditions, addresses a community, demonstrated community need, is consistent with the zoning districts, would result in a logical and orderly development pattern, and would not result in significantly adverse impacts on the natural environment? So those are the factors that you can use in making your decision on this request. Staff does recommend approval. The future land use map amendment proposed is consistent with the '06 land use plan, the policy emphasis for the Corolla subareas to allow for predominantly medium-density residential development with minimal commercial development arranged in clusters. The requested change may allow for potential commercial or mixed-use development in an existing commercial center in Corolla. Full service designation and commercial development are located to the south, water and sewer are available to the property. The property is in close proximity to NC 12, a major arterial street, and an Army Corps certified wetland delineation indicates the area proposed for full service designation does not contain wetland areas. This request did go before the planning board, the planning board motion failed, you can see in your agenda packet, on page 20, the motion made for denial was that the area is designated conservation on the future land use map, and the requested amendment will allow more intense development in an area outside of existing full service designation. Did result in a tie vote, and because of that, it did move forward to you as a recommendation of denial. Some of the concerns that were discussed at the planning board were related to the development proposal, traffic, parking, flooding, stormwater concerns, and environmental That's all I have for you at this time, any questions?
Jenny, why did the, what's the holdup on the future land use map? This board has basically seen that for years at this point, five years that I've been here, and are you aware why we haven't formalized that map yet?
We're, staff's working on addressing concerns that were presented from the Division of Coastal Management with regards to them determining that the plan is complete.
Okay.
So, we are working on getting that resolved, and hope to have that before this board as soon as possible.
And so, I thought you were done.
Well, I just, so you've already submitted that, this board approves what you guys showed us and we worked on, and you went in the community and worked on that map as well, people in Corolla, various other areas throughout the county worked on that future land use map that you showed us.
Right.
And this board approved that, and you have, you guys have submitted that to KAMA, right?
We have submitted, we submitted the plan, it's been, I believe, two years now that it was submitted to KAMA. You may recall that, I think within the past six months to a year there, that we had some work sessions where specific area maps were shown to the board, and some board members had specific comments on changes.
Right.
Those changes have not been sent to DCM at this point. DCM's feedback didn't really relate to the land use map itself, it had more to do with the plan policies and how those will be implemented.
Okay.
So if we had approved that land use plan, this wouldn't be necessary, this process that we're going through right now?
That if you, if you approve that land use plan with the map as shown, that is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, if not, I'll thank you, and I'll ask the applicant to come forward, please, and...
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is John Morrison, I'm an attorney with Twyford Law Firm, 111 Currituck Commercial Drive in Moayok. I represent the applicant, which is Outer Banks Ventures. I'm not sure what you wish me to address that Jenny did not, I think it would probably be helpful, and how you want to use your time going forward on this, I realize there's been some concern about what the actual development will be if you amend this, but that's not before you tonight, and there are like a bazillion different application processes that the applicant would have to go through from KAMA to building code to, back, coming back to you more than once. But if you want, Mr. Vessel is here, and he is prepared to tell you what the proposal would be. I am not going to address that, I'm going to address why I think you should exercise your discretion in approving this. So, if I may, keeping firmly in mind that the staff has recommended this, and Commissioner George, your question was well-taken, if what they had given you a couple of years ago had been approved, then this would be a permissible use, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't be here. Also, it may help you, because I got very confused when I was starting out, we got two land use plans that we'll talk about. One is the future land use plan. Well, the future land use plan was done in 2006, so it's not something, when I say the future land use plan, I'm not talking about something we're gonna do in the future. What is actually gonna take place in the future is the Imagine Currituck Plan, okay, which will ally this. All right, just, so obviously, the reason we're here is we want to get this amended so that we can then go forward with the proposal. The present use, you might find of interest, the present use is a pond, a vacant space, a utility open space for Monterey Shores PUD. Now, let me address, so it won't be too confusing, the utilities open space. This is a land use plan, there is no legal document such as a conservation easement or a utility easement other than, that it's plotted. And I addressed this with the planning department back in June 24th, there's a legal doctrine called cessation of, cessation of purpose of easement, meaning, if the purpose for which an easement was constructed no longer exists, which is the case here, then the easement automatically ceases to exist. And I quoted from a respected text of North Carolina Rural Property Law by Professor Webster, if you would indulge me, this is a direct citation, "If the particular purpose for which an easement is created is fulfilled, or otherwise ceases to exist, the easement also ceases. This is a corollary to the rule that an easement holder's right to use the property is a right to use it only for the purpose for which the easement is created." Well, this easement was created before there were water and sewer utilities up there. So, this would not, the only thing this easement could ever be used for is the utility easement, and that purpose no longer exists, so there's no, the easement no longer exists, because that need has been fulfilled elsewhere. Okay, this is 36 acres, 36.19 acres, currently .4 tenths of an acre is designated full service, that's under the future land use plan, full service, 35.79 is under conservation, not a conservation easement, but a conservation plan. The requested designation, what he's asking for would be 12.22 acres would be full service, the remaining, still the large majority of the property, 23.57 acres would still remain in conservation. Now, the two... Now, the 2006 land use plan does appear to allow this, and then you've got, or part of it anyway, I'm advised by Mr. Bissell that they think they could build, but it wouldn't be nearly as attractive and it would not have as much open space. As I understand it, the purpose of clustering, which you have in your plan, is to create open space. You know, instead of having a row of houses or a row of shops, you cluster things to leave open space, in this case, to be able to see and have access to the Currituck sign. The staff, as you heard, finds that this is acceptable with the 2006 land use plan, Imagine, upgrade of 2006 land use plan called Imagine Currituck. The property is already surrounded by commercial and residential property, Timbuktu, Monterey Shores, et cetera. It's close to a major arterial street and to North Carolina 12. The existing pond, which is quite large, and I'm further advised, this is unusual to find this large a pond because the real estate up there is very expensive and the developer doesn't want to dig big ponds because he could put a store or a house on it. This will be, this pond will have a significant impact on stormwater runoff. As of April 23rd this year, so this is a new fact, as Jenny was telling you, Jenny was telling you, it's rare that you get site-specific requests for an amendment because you're looking at the big picture. What's the phrase now? Thirty thousand feet up, this is what it looks like. Well, this is on the grind, what it looks like. The, as of April 23rd this year, there was a new wetland delineation that shows where the proposed development will be, will not be in wetlands. And all of the wetlands will remain in the conservation part of the property. Again, I can't emphasize this enough, if you were to approve this, then the applicant goes forward. But before the applicant, this will be for the public, I'm sure you realize this, there are many, many safeguards for environmental concerns because of the other permits the applicant must get and prove to very technically expert agencies. He must satisfy KAMA, Coastal Management, preliminary plat application to you, major site, site plan review and approval, construction drawings, building permits, state permits, county permits, and final plat application. And all of these have subparts to it, none of which is what is before you. So you could theoretically approve this amendment to the land use plan and the developer could still have problems down the road. You're not saying you get your development, you're just saying, okay, this land is suitable for development. The change in circumstances since 2006 is the new wetlands delineation map. Then also, I find this kind of interesting, this board, not you in particular, perhaps Owen was here.
Owen's always taking it on his chin.
Yeah. Owen, I recall, he came down, he was visiting with George Washington up in Mount Vernon and he came all the way down to attend this meeting. But July 6th, 2009, the Board of Commissioners of Currituck County entertained an application from Mr. De Gabriel, who developed Monterey Shores, to develop property on, to start a development on this very property that's denominated for reservation, okay? For conservation. And this board said, and I have the minutes for it and I've sent this to the planning department too, yes, that's consistent with the 2006 future land use plan to develop on conservation property. So, you know, it's just kind of general fairness, you treat people similarly situated similarly. Now, you would obviously, I know you put great weight on your planning board and they do a wonderful job. So the question would be, why, why did they not approve this? I do not have detailed minutes, but the minutes I've got indicates that Ms. Kreis, seconded by Mr. Dahl, moved that this area not be re-designated because it will allow intense development in a conservation area outside of the full service designation. Well, certainly they're entitled to that opinion, but what you will see is this is not going to be an intense development. Also, the development, I don't think should have been before the planning board. I mean, that's, they weren't asked to approve a development, they're just asked to approve an amendment to the plan or to, to recommend. And it is also my understanding that under the new Imagine Currituck, this will be designated G3 or something like that, which pretty much meets the definition under the existing future, the future land use plan, which is the existing document you have. It is full service. So the G3 and the full service is pretty much the same thing. So where, the plan that has been previously presented to you, the Imagine Currituck, we'll call it G3, is that right?
Yep.
We'll call it G3. Under the Imagine Currituck, G3 is the same thing as full service under the future land use plan. So, I have Mr. Bissell here. If you would like to hear what this proposed development might be, subject to many hoops and hurdles you would have to go through, he is prepared to present that. We also have an environmentalist here who worked with the Army Corps of Engineers and got the delineation. He can talk to you about why there would not be pollutants going into the sign because of natural barriers and because of this big pond. He can address the scientific issues and I will of course entertain any questions you have, but that's the end of my expertise. Owen, I find like you, the older I get, the less expert I am. So that's the end of my dog and pony show, subject to any questions you may have.
Would the board entertain any questions to either other of the individuals here?
I just have a question. So you're, the project's just in the planning stage, so you have not, they've not applied for any KAMA permits? I know a boat dock is being discussed, a walkway out by, so have, have they been, applied for?
I don't know if the, that was beyond, nothing has been applied to KAMA yet, but I, I do know some people were concerned about a marina. Under the proposal, it's not a marina, it's 10 boat slips. The idea would be to allow you to approach a restaurant that's going to be there by, by water. And there's going to be a pavilion there. And also, if you want to get into this, I know that finding housing for help, for teachers, for deputy sheriffs in Corolla is terrible. They're going to build six apartments for people like that over top of these, these shops. But anyway, you would have, it would be the only place that we are aware of on the Currituck Outer Banks where you can have a restaurant and overlook the sign, okay? And where people can approach by boat. But all of that is not really before you tonight and, and you could reject any of that in the future. You're not approving a development. You're only saying, okay, why don't we go ahead and let this land use plan reflect what it's going to reflect anyway and what we've already approved and what we let Mr. De Gabriel do.
And I, just a statement, and you may or may not know this, but I would think it would be common to probably not apply for some of those permits until you're actually moving forward to waste your time and energy and money.
Yeah, lots of money. So it would not make business sense to apply until they knew what you were, you were going to do. You are not surrendering control over this, not a, not a bit. You're just saying, okay, show us what you got.
Any other questions on this board?
No.
Okay, if not, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the, the public hearing. I have no one signed up for this. If there's somebody who may have showed up late that wants to speak in public hearing on this item, please come forward right now. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on this and I'll ask the board for motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move to approve PB 21-19 Outer Banks Ventures Land Use Plan Amendment because the request is consistent with the 2006 land use plan and it meets the Imagine Currituck Proposed Land Use Plan, specifically the G3 zoning for density. The policy emphasis for the Corolla subarea is to allow for predominantly medium density residential development with minimal, with minimal commercial development arranged in clusters. The requested change may allow for potential commercial or mixed use development in an existing commercial center in Corolla. Full service designation and commercial development are located to the south. Water and sewer are available. The property is in close proximity to NC 12 and the Army Corps certified wetland delineation indicates the area proposed for full service designation does not contain wetland areas.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Have a second, Commissioner Rethers down here. Any further discussions on this? Seeing none, I'll ask the board for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the next item under public hearings is item B, PB 21-15 Windswept Pines Phase Three Allied Properties LLC requests conditional zoning of 15.55 acres from CMX, or CMXR Conditional Mixed Residential to CMXR Alden Run and Swim Pet, Windswept Pines Development in Moyoc Township. I believe, this is Donald Vowell has this tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The request before you tonight was submitted by Allied Properties. They are both the applicant and the owner of the tract of land before you. As you mentioned, this is a conditional rezoning application and it involves the properties that were previously, previously identified as undeveloped on the conceptual plans as well as a phase four, which is the commercial area. This is the proposed phase three. This is the 15.55 acre tract at the eastern edge of the development. And this is the 1.4 acre, 1.48 acre commercial portion located between the railroad right-of-way and Currituck Highway. So this particular property is currently zoned conditional MXR. And it, the reason why it was zoned commercial conditional MXR is because it was part of the original plan. However, no density or lots were actually shown on this particular area, it was identified as future development. The request was, actually came before you back in 2015 initially, and that was to identify the 59 lots that are now built on in phases one and two. They have their access that comes in off of Baxter Lane on Parish Point and then Alden Run that extends to the east. It included those 59 lots as well as the 1.4 acre commercial piece, just here. But no conceptual development plan for the back 15 acres. The applicant later came in, in 2018, to amend the conditional zoning or basically establish a new district that expanded open space and the stormwater ponds into this area. And those stormwater ponds were needed for phase two. At that point, there were still no development plans for that 15.55 acre tract to the east. In 2019, the applicant submitted a request to actually establish the development and the development plan for those 14 lots. And at that point in time, the Moyoc Elementary School was deemed at capacity based on the August 2019 ADM. And the Board of Commissioners voted to deny that request at the hearing because it was deemed inconsistent with the land use plan policy, PP 2, which deals with the adequate public facility sections of the land use plan. Since the initial conditional zoning approval, as I mentioned, all of the lots in Windswept Pines Phases One and Two are built on and it's built out at that point. The applicant is coming forward at this point to establish those 14 lots and it was previously identified as future development. And this is that plan. The conditional zoning still exists up to this point, as it's shown in gray. Phases three will be this green area, possible expansion of stormwater pond and the 14 lots, connections to the north as well as the east for any type of future development that could connect to those areas. This is the inset of the commercial area here. And that includes a small area, 10% of open space allocation for that area. It does remain unchanged, there's no proposed changes for phase four. The density for this rezoning, just looking at the 15 acres, is .9 units per acre. When you look at all of Windswept Pines, including phase three, that involves 73 lots, so it's going from 59 to 73. And the 66.8 acre tract of the entire parcel, this, this particular area will have also five, 7.51 acres of open space and a majority of the open space will allow for the expansion of that stormwater pond. The overall development density of the entire parcel will be 1.09 acres and is deemed consistent with the plans, land use plan and, or the Moyoc Small Area Plan. The applicant is also proposing the following zoning conditions. The use will be a subdivision. All lots will be greater than 20,000 square feet. The project engineer will model to the 10-year, that's actually 100-year, storm event and stormwater will be managed from the 100, excuse me, it will be designed to the 100-year and it will be managed from the 100-year storm. The applicant will work with Soil and Water Conservation to explore improving the drainage outlet to the east of the development. That was an exploration to look at what things could be done to improve the drainage. And I believe Dylan Lloyd with Soil and Stormwater is here tonight and can speak to the findings and what's actually being proposed. That particular condition does not address any type of improvement, it just says that they will continue to work with soil and stormwater to improve the drainage outlet, but doesn't speak to the specifics. All residential development will be single-family and will conform to the sample building elevations provided. And those building elevations can be found in your packet, they begin on packet page 54 and extend through page 60. So the applicant held a community meeting on May 25th of this year at the Eagle Creek Outdoor Pavilion. The comments received at that meeting were really centered around the overturn, the turnover to the association and the common areas and how that transfer will actually happen. Planned drainage improvements. Planned drainage improvements for the development. And it also, there were concerns about the existing drainage infrastructure and the phases of Windswept Pines and the ongoing maintenance of that particular area. Those minutes of the meeting can also be found in your packet. It starts at packet page 61 and extends through packet page 66. If you have questions regarding the improvements that are being proposed, that are identified as proposed zoning condition number four, we can speak briefly to where that is. You may recall the culvert and the water line that is to the east of this development and along Baxter Lane. Dylan's been working with the property owners to try to get approval to install those necessary improvements, which the developer has said he will take care of those as part of the construction of this particular phase. And some drainage improvements on in this area. But the specifics of that, I'll have, I'd have to refer to Dylan as what they've worked out on that if you have any questions regarding it.
Donna, do you know if they've gotten any better? It seemed like we heard a lot about this area when he first built it. And there were some improvements made downstream. Is that the case?
Well, yes.
Crushed culvert pipe or something down there?
So there were some improvements that were part of the zoning conditions of the phases one and two that required improvements in this area and a new pipe. And those were all put in.
Okay.
It rerouted the the major portion of the drainage through this area.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of going through area on the north side of the development that was not cleared and the developer could not obtain the adjacent property owner's permission to clean that that area out. So the engineer designed a, the plan that would reroute that drainage and enlarge it and send it this way and out. But the the problem still exists further down. Let me go back. If you can see here, yeah, the problem still exists here, which is what Soil and Stormwater has been working with the developer to try to lower that that water line and actually put in.
Was it, wasn't it the culvert pipe was too small or crushed or something over there?
Yeah, and it's high. It's here.
There was a lot of debris, I think there was in there too.
There was a lot of blockage too, which I think, that was some a different, I don't know who's doing that, but a different developer.
Right, then they went in and cleaned out the car.
We put that requirement on to clean that stuff out.
Right, okay.
Are you talking about further down here?
Yeah.
Yes, that was part of the landings conditions and that work has been done.
Which there was, I think, a truck and a car and some appliances.
Oh, yeah.
It's a good point to get rid of your stuff, put it in the dish.
So the technical review committee reviewed the proposed conditional rezoning and they identified four topics, comments. One related to the adoptive plan consistency between the land use plan and the small area plan, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. The other issue had to do with on-street parking. You know, some of these lots in Moyac, you're seeing smaller lots, bigger homes, homes closer to the road, not enough driveway space to accommodate all of the vehicles, the recreational vehicles and on-street parking's occurring. So the concerns of continuing being able to get fire equipment, emergency vehicle equipment into these and even school buses into these subdivisions, the fire official has asked for no parking to be installed. So we'll talk a little bit more about that proposed condition as well. And then adequate public facilities, we'll talk about school capacities. And then the last item was spot zoning challenge. So this property is just over 15 acres and conditional zonings are not exempt from that spot zoning challenge. Given the size of this, the board needs to make sure that all factors defining this request are reasonable spot zoning that are considered during the hearing because spot zonings aren't necessarily illegal. They are permissible as long as you go through the the effort to make sure that it is reasonable and in the public interest. And those elements that you look at are the size and nature of the tract. This is a 15.55 acre tract of land that is being developed, very similar to the property that is also zoned CMXR to the west. And again, this property does have conditional zoning currently on it. It just does not have any development plan for the 14 lots that's being proposed. We also look at the compatibility with the existing plans and we'll talk more about the 2006 land use plan and the small area plan to cover that one. And the impact the decision has on the landowner, the immediate neighbors and the surrounding community. Again, this is just extending that development to a next phase of the project. And the relationship between the newly allowed uses and the spot rezoning and the previous allowed uses. So again, this is conditional zoning. It has conditional MXR on the property. It just does not have the ability to develop the 14 lots, which is what they're seeking. So for the plan consistency item that the TRC identified as a comment, this is the 2006 land use plan and the property is identified as rural. And it is in the Moyac sub area. And with the rural designation, the ordinance does not allow for any development density in the MXR zoning. However, the Moyac Small Area Plan identifies the property as full service. And so when the emphasis is placed on the land use plan, there's no ability to apply density to the project. Previously, in the 2015 and the 2018 conditional rezoning applications, the emphasis was placed on the Moyac Small Area Plan, which is why they were, you did not have to go through any type of amendment to the land use plan and the ordinance applied in that manner. So as you remember, there was a decision made that actually placed the policy emphasis and the emphasis of the plans, the long-range plans on the 2006 land use plan. So this effort would actually, if the board chooses to approve the rezoning, you will also need to make an amendment to the future land use map.
Donna, what would trigger those two different things? So you got the 2006 future land use map and then you have the Moyac Small Area Plan. And that Moyac Small Area Plan really delved into obviously the small area, right?
It did, it did.
And would it not make sense that that would be the heavier weighted in this situation? Because that's what the people that we put together said, hey, let's do this in this area.
Yes, and through your, if you choose to approve this request, you would actually implement the small area plan by amending the land use plan and establishing full service designation on this map.
Okay.
So, yes, that that this 2006 land use plan was more of a broad land use plan for the entire county. When we did the small area plan, it actually dived into particular areas and looked at where you want development to take place, where infrastructure will be available and what would actually be areas that you would want to see development to occur. And that's in those full service areas.
Thank you.
Donna, the, one of the conditions I'm looking at here is the the no parking signage shall be installed in phase three at locations suggested by the fire office.
Mm-hmm.
Which I'm all for that. Who's, who's enforcing that? If that sign's put in there? Is that going to be, is that going to be the Sheriff's Department, the Highway Patrol? I mean, was it a state maintained road, the HOA, the?
So, so that is a, that is a request that the fire official has asked, that no parking signage actually be installed in those areas. So the signs will be installed and if someone parks in those areas, it's not listed as one of those streets that no parking is allowed on that's in the code of ordinances that the, that the Sheriff's Department actually tickets people on. But when someone comes in and makes application for for a house and we make sure that they meet the minimum parking requirements for that single-family dwelling. Now, it's minimal, but not always achieves the area in which everyone needs to park their, all their things, not only their cars, but their toys on their property. And sometimes parking spills over into the street. No one's searching out to to say no parking. However, and there, I can't say there would never be a situation where no one would be or anyone would be cited for violation for parking in the street, but it wouldn't be a Sheriff's Department item unless, of course, it's actually in the code of ordinances as one of the restricted streets.
One of the roads.
And, because we're getting a lot of those questions in some of the other neighborhoods. You may remember, right before COVID hit, there were some neighborhoods where a lot of construction activity was taking place and people had moved in there and school buses could not get into the subdivisions. And that was early, early 2019.
We got that somewhat country side of state.
Yeah, and and it was creating a problem and, you know, the, there was one situation where the school bus couldn't even, had to drop the kids off at the front of the neighborhood. Luckily, they were middle school and high school age students, but I mean, it's certainly not something you want to occur with elementary school age kids. So it's, it's not only for for making sure that you can accommodate the parking on site. It's not just for fire and emergency vehicles, but it's for for the school buses too. And it, it was becoming a really, a really bad problem there when construction was was ongoing. I don't, I don't think it's nearly as bad in some of those subdivisions now because a lot of efforts are being made by the associations to let the property owners know, no parking on the streets, so, which has spurred a lot of conversation to the manager's office as well as our office on what the codes are related to that.
As well as ours.
Yeah.
Well, under, under state law, the county may only regulate parking on privately owned streets upon request or petition of the owner of the streets. So in the instances in which the county has imposed a no parking requirement in the code of ordinances, particularly on a number of subdivisions and streets in Corolla, that has come to the county, first of all, by petition or resolution of the Property Owners Association that owns those streets and roads, and then the commissioners have adopted an ordinance to prohibit parking. In this instance, unless until there is a petition from the owner of the streets to to adopt an ordinance prohibiting parking on those streets, there will be no jurisdiction of the county, at least from a law enforcement perspective, to enforce parking, a no parking prohibition on the streets. It begs the question whether there might be a code enforcement component to that.
It was like a safety.
But you could imagine that if you're going to have our limited code enforcement officers going through subdivisions on private streets and writing citations for motor vehicles that are parked on the streets, that it might be untenable for the county to do that. And thus, it would be, you really would be looking to the Property Owners Association and/or restrictive covenant enforcement to take care of those issues within a subdivision.
Thank you.
Good question. Seems to be coming up a lot here lately.
We need wider streets, is what it boils down to.
Well, you know, you are seeing curb and gutter and it limits the people's ability to actually pull off on the shoulder and park. And, you know, you're, you have two travel lanes within curb to curb and you park a vehicle here, a vehicle here, you may not be able to.
Yeah, we still get a ton, we still get, we still get a ton of complaints 20 years later with Eagle Creek, believe it or not, is actually one of our biggest.
That one used to be a lot worse than what it is now. So the relevant plan policies for this conditional rezoning application include the 2006 land use plan and that is policy HN1, where the county shall encourage development to occur at densities appropriate for the location. The proposed development densities for this project are consistent with the Moyac Small Area Plan. And if you look at the full service designation of the land use plan, should that be amended as well, it would be consistent with that too. And this Moyac Small Area Plan, the FLU1 policy to promote compatibility between new development and existing development to avoid adverse impacts to the existing community. They're making great efforts to try to help improve the drainage issues along the street. The other item that was a TRC concern had to do with adequate public facilities and school capacity. And since 2019, Moyac Elementary School has been at or over capacity and continues on that trend. We're seeing numbers that are just, just keep going up. Now, this particular subdivision, the 14 lots, will generate three elementary school students that will actually go to the Moyac Elementary School, School District and one middle school and one high school student. Under the Tischler Study, that's the 2004 student generation, based on the student generation rate. Now, the May ADM, that's provided below, but the August ADM, which we did receive, actually shows the Moyac Elementary School at 127% capacity. So those numbers are jumping up rather rapidly and 130% committed capacity on the combined Moyac-Shawboro Central Schools.
Did, we had Dr. Lutz here. I didn't know if he wanted to, with the schools, if.
Put him on the spot.
Well, I didn't know if he wanted to maybe address any of that or is that seem, I mean, I just, I didn't know if you wanted to take a minute and just.
So I heard that come up in the earlier comments. So I pulled up our current numbers and I wanted to give you an update on where we're at with our schools in terms of capacity. But also just, there's the capacity component and there's also the space. And sometimes the two don't always measure up. Currently, Moyac Elementary has 676 students. We have no space left currently at Moyac Elementary. Of course, we have a plan, but when I say we have no space, we have classes going on in the foyer. We have taken over every available space within that building and we've added six modular units, about three modular units with six classrooms outside of the building. Of course, we have a plan in place that's moving forward. The kindergarten building will be demolished hopefully before Christmas and we're going to add classrooms in, but that will not be ready to go until 2023, provided everything goes on schedule. Shawboro has one classroom available and that's after adding two modular units as well. And we have also maximized all of the untraditional spaces in that building to this point. We took the book room and turned it into a classroom. We've taken teacher work rooms and turned them into classrooms. So we're really stretching the, the building usage as far as we possibly can. Central Elementary, we have to add a first grade classroom.
How many students at Shawboro?
Shawboro has 622 students as of today. These are pretty, so this is pretty much the numbers we're going to look at for the remainder of the year. I anticipate Moyac Elementary to add a few throughout the course of the year, but the other ones will largely remain fairly steady. Central Elementary is 272 students and no classrooms. We have to add a first grade classroom due to the class size law mandate and we have to add a teacher. We had one remaining classroom that we had held back for that purpose and allocated that teacher here two weeks ago, said, go ahead, we're going to move forward with that hire. I was attempting not to do that, but the, the numbers stayed steady. And again, I do want to add that we are required by law to provide preschool opportunities for our students and those preschools take up space at both Shawboro and Central as well. When I say take up space, they, you have a lot of very small people taking up a lot of space inside of the classrooms and that impacts these as well. Griggs Elementary is 247. We do have space at Griggs Elementary. Jarvisburg is a 267 and we have no remaining traditional classrooms in that building. We could do some things that we did at Shawboro, but right now we are completely out of traditional classroom spaces. And Knott's Island has set a recent record with 102 students. So the Moyac Middle. So, uh, the Moyac Middle School is at 603. And, uh, we are putting that addition on to the Moyac, uh, Middle School, adding classrooms to each wing. I did want to add that when our boards get together, uh, hopefully in late October, uh, I will be sharing with you the 10-year facility study and the 10-year and the, uh, ORED study, which outlines our anticipated growth, which they created through the use with our planning department. And Moyac Elementary is going to continue to grow. We are, our plan largely will address some of that growth. Um, but it, it projects out for Shawboro and Moyac Middle School. So what we have set up in place right now with the additions and the new elementary school, um, is, is a good step forward, given the growth that we're anticipating. And I look forward to sharing that information with you when that report is finalized. Um, it, it's in a final draft, and I have a couple more meetings before I take it to our board and then to both our boards together, hopefully in late October.
Okay. No, thank, thank you for that update.
Absolutely.
I mean, could you give us the Currituck Middle and Currituck High and NAP numbers, too?
Currituck Middle's at 337. I do want to point out they have a very small seventh grade class. It seems like an anomaly, that number normally sit between 375 and 400. But there's only 95 kids in the seventh grade class. We kind of see that little bit of a bubble, uh, district wide. That's, uh, that was a downturn in '08. A little conjecture on my part, but you can, alright. Uh, and the High, Currituck County High School has 1,051 students, and NAP has 258. It's always, I do go to the elementaries because they have the, I'm reminded the space in elementary schools is different than space elsewhere. There are kids in those spaces all day long. You have a little more flexibility, a lot more flexibility at the high school level and slightly, and some flexibility at the middle school level.
Thank you for those numbers, Dr. Lutz.
Thank you, Dr. Lutz. As he mentioned, that, you know, there are, uh, plans for an addition at Moyac Elementary School.
Two years.
That is a design-build contract that was executed with a substantial completion date of August 1st, 2023, and a final completion date 30 days thereafter. The board could actually consider, uh, through conditions, they have to be mutually agreed upon between the applicant and the county, uh, any type of phasing or timing for this particular subdivision. If you wanted to do that and consider that with the rezoning, you can also consider it during the preliminary plat hearing if you can make the determination that, um, to move forward with the rezoning. The land use plan, as I mentioned, that's relevant to adequate public facilities is policy PP2. So, the technical review committee, taking all of those comments into consideration, believes that provided adequate public facilities are available to serve this development, the TRC would recommend approval of this conditional rezoning, um, subject to the additional condition that has actually been agreed upon with the applicant. They have agreed to, to do the no parking signage that would be installed in Phase 3 at locations suggested by the fire official. And as I mentioned earlier, this request would also be an amendment to the land use plan. Um, so in your motion, if you choose to approve it, you would also need to, um, amend the land use plan to identify the property as full service as, in part of that motion. The planning board recommend approval of this request. And that's that area I was referring to that would be part of the land use plan amendment, should you change this from rural to full service. It would be this back area, because there's no change to the front. It's already in full service. The conditional rezoning request is consistent with and would amend the 2006 land use plan by designating the map as full service on the future land use map because, um, this amendment actually recognizes and implements that full service designation that's part of the Moyac small area plan that was adopted by the board. And it is deemed reasonable and in keeping with the changed conditions acknowledged by the small area plan, and addresses the demonstrated community need of providing that full service area that offers both residential and commercial uses in the development. That concludes my presentation. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I, I have a question. Um, as I wasn't on the board, I don't have the recollection. How long did it take for Phases 1 and 2 to build out? Or approximately? I'm not looking for an exact number of.
The developer might be able to give me a better, uh, better timeframe for that.
Okay.
Uh, let's see if I. I don't have that date in here. I would say it was. Two years? No? Four?
That, that's years, four, four to five years.
I can, I can get that information for you. And, and get that back to you.
I guess, well, probably better for the applicant, but, uh, like lead time currently on a house with the world the way it is, that's considerably different than what it was three or four or five years ago.
Probably so. It'd be better to answer that question.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions for staff? If not, I'll thank Donna.
Okay.
Oops, sorry.
I'm sorry, she said the planning board, what was the planning board you said that was?
It was recommend for approval.
Who was there, Beth?
Ian Adams.
Oh, Ian Adams, okay.
Bob Siro.
Well, I didn't know who was there at that time. Different, yeah, different meeting, probably. Alright, any other questions? Alright, thank you, uh, Ms. Valverde.
Thank you.
And, um, I'll ask the applicant, I mean, if, if the applicant come forward, please, then? And just, just remind the commissioner, again, make sure we, um, click our mics on when we. I actually had the signal at us, hit us. Kevin got the signal.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. My, uh, Mr. Morrison did such an outstanding job on the last hearing. I didn't even get to, uh, come up and speak with you all, so. But I'm going to try not to make up for it here. I'll just try to keep this brief. I think.
This control works now, right?
Okay, great. Okay, this, um, shows the existing conditions following the buildout of Phases 1 and 2, with the 15 and a half acres on the east side being the undeveloped portion. But as Ms. Valverde indicated, it's already been zoned CMXR, just without the approved plan. Uh, this shows, um, the development plan for the remaining part of the site, which basically continues the existing development pattern. This, uh, provides a blow up showing the 14 lots with buffers to existing development on all sides, enlarges the stormwater management facilities that she indicated will be designed to manage the 100-year storm event. Uh, the next several slides show the proposed housing styles, which are similar to the homes that were constructed in the first two phases and certainly compatible with the area. This slide, uh, is what we've been working with Dylan Lloyd on to implement a new drainage outlet to the east. And he has been meeting with property owners and obtaining rights of entry in order to be able to, uh, provide some relief to both the existing development and provide a new outlet to serve the new development. So, there, you can see these lots. Look for the pointer here. Yep. That wasn't it. The lots, the, uh, these lots that back up, uh, from Baxter Lane will have a ditch deep along the back, which will also connect to Phase 1 and 2 here. And, um, then we're talking about improving this new outlet all the way to the, to the outlet here at the creek.
Mr. Wilson, I'll stop you for a second. Where the red line starts, or we're going to say closer to the county manager attorney, that's where there's a stormwater pond, that's Baxter Lane lots bottom, closer to the floor. So that's going to go all the way down Baxter. And then where's it going? It goes.
Kevin's behind me.
Mike.
Microphone.
Sorry. So it starts right there, goes all the way down Baxter. Mr. Morales, who's come in here before, um, it goes back down that, and then what that is, I know that's part of the, that's where the vehicles and stuff were in the second little line that had been cleaned out. Wh- where's that outlet going to, the far with the arrow at the end?
Long line.
The long line.
Yeah, that ends up in the same place down here on, uh, the, now, this is the, this is the, uh, draw that was just cleaned out as part of the landing, right here.
Yeah.
And we're also looking at, at cleaning, at, uh, replacing this culvert here. That's actually a, a zoning condition for, as part of a separate project request. But, um, these are all worked together to, to get drainage into the creek down here. So anyway, that's where they pull the cars out and various other.
I got you. But where's the, above that, like, that's, like, I, I mean, I, I, and I was looking at backwards for a second. So we're going all the way down Baxter. When it, when it gets to whatever that last lot is.
Right here.
Um, where the red arrow goes up.
Up, right. There's an existing ditch there, but it's not much of a ditch.
It's a farmer's ditch or something, isn't it?
Farm ditch, right. And then there's like the remnant of a ditch that comes across here. But, uh, then, and then there is an existing farm ditch that would just be improved and turned into a major outlet to continue to the east. So that would provide an alternate way out so that all of the water is not eventually ending up in the Baxter Lane ditch and coming out this way.
Do you know how mu-
Two outlets.
Do you know how much luck you've, you've had in getting access to these ditches? Or where you're, where you're at in that?
Actually, Dylan is the one that's taking the lead in that.
Where Dylan is at in that process?
Hang for a second, I've been trying to. Sorry, Mark, I'm stealing your time here. I'll be fast. Now, we mentioned earlier about drainage in the area, and you know it's been problematic on Baxter. Uh, Baxter Station is actually a separate development that's being planned to the south of Baxter. So you look at this map up here, below the red line, below Baxter, which is that white line in the middle of the screen, you see another vacant lot. And that's a separate deal. And when that gets built out, they're going to improve the Baxter Lane ditch. And I know it gets confusing because we're calling both of these the Baxter Ditch. Um, this one doesn't really have a name yet. This is just a proposal, but there is an existing farm ditch that's been out of service and just out of whack for, let's say, 50, 60 years. But it will not be difficult. We've obtained, um, right of entry agreements from all the residents that you see along the north side of Baxter Lane. They will dig that out, align it with an existing system. And Jamie Jarvis's field, we have right of entry and agreements with him as well. Um, be improving a pipe under this farm access road kind of in the middle. This is a, a natural arm of shingle landing out here. So, you know, we've done the, um, surveying, we've done the, kind of the hydraulic work with the engineering department to determine the capacity we would need. And, uh, I mean, you've heard it from, you mentioned Mr. Morales. I mean, we've had people speak here before. I mean, here we are, it's October 4th, and knock on wood, we haven't had any hurricanes or any bad storms, but they call me all the time. They're, hey, Dylan, hurricane season's coming up. And truthfully, this area, these homes have flooded before. And the development, we've had some extreme rains over the past year and a half. You remember last year, we had about 60-something inches. That's abnormal. We typically have 47 inches, I think. So anyways, they're going to provide some relief, and this is just, uh, you know, really crossing the, the Ts and dotting the Is here. This isn't just working on Baxter Lane ditch, which, as I mentioned earlier, is to the south. This is an entirely new facility, and it's kind of following an existing line. So the residents are on board, the developers are on board, um, and the, the person who owns this farmland out here is on board, which is, you know, win-win-win. So, again, we mentioned, I believe Donna mentioned earlier the, and someone mentioned the culvert and the issue at the end of Baxter Lane. That, that is a separate deal, but this all, you know, it all relates. So it's all part of the same area, so, you know. But what we're talking about with this particular project, just so you understand, is this new facility right here, which is just retracing an old farm ditch system.
If you're using a pointer, we don't see it.
Right, so you're, you're basically, the red line is what you're, you're, you're saying is the new facility? Is that, is that?
It's where we've seen somebody's doing, okay.
Right.
Oh, thank you, Kevin.
Kevin.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin.
But yeah, we've, we've, I've been out here, we've done surveys, we have a pretty good plan. I think it's solid. And, um, you know, we, so they're expanding the ponds, too. They're expanding the stormwater ponds. Now, again, the engineering shows that the 10-year, two-year requirement is met. But like, I'm, you know, I mentioned, we had some big storms last year, some big rain events. And at some point in that rain event, you know, people's yards flood and the ponds flood. And what happens is areas connect, and it appears that the pond is overflowing. This will allow some, you know, like an extra safety net on top of the features that they've already put in.
But this is, that's, like you said, the 10-year, but this is being designed to the 100-year, correct? Isn't that what Donna said?
Yes. But, I mean, like I said, we, we have, um, you know, we have entry agreements and we have a plan. And, uh, the, the issue along Baxter Lane, this, the, like I just mentioned, that's, that's kind of a separate project, but that's, it's the same party. So, you know, we're going to, it's all, it's all in the works. But what we're talking about tonight is solely this, what you're looking at, this red line right here.
So the Baxter Lane ditch at that bend where that culvert pipe is, is really the, is, is existing, is really a problem right in that area, is it not?
Super low, too.
Right.
They replaced it, some resident replaced it a few years back. To my understanding, they didn't set it correctly.
Okay.
We require a culvert cert on, uh, even driveways, you know, so if someone doesn't place something, well, tips a turvy and it's not, you know, black enough.
So, I think the problem is, right now, that is the biggest obstruction we've seen, uh, you know, and heard about the flooding issues in that area. Obviously, we've had some extreme weather events, and some of that got remedied by cleaning out further east of that, but, um.
And they cleaned out in front of it, too. DOT cleaned out in front of it as well.
Right. Now, where would you say, so you guys, are you trying to get permission to fix that ditch for, or, at this point in time?
Baxter Lane, on Baxter. We have permission.
You do?
We have permission.
Okay, and so the developer who's behind you, I guess, can speak to that, is willing to pay for that repair? Is that where we're at?
Yeah, again, I just want to mention, that's, that's a separate issue. I mean, but we are, it is all part of the same university or fashion lane.
Right, it is, because that water's coming down.
What this does right here with this feature, this, what you're seeing, this red line, this canal, this is, um, making sure that we don't put extra, you know, burden on, you know, that culvert before we get to replace it, dropping it, whatever they're going to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, I guess, would that be done in conjunction with the site development or prior to it, or afterwards? Or what's the thought on that?
The, the plan would be to do it in conjunction with the site development. Donna's already been over the proposed zoning conditions. Uh, we got, glad to answer any questions about those, but everything has been agreed to by, by both parties, including, uh, working on this drainage outlet to the east. Other considerations, um, that the, the developer and county are also working together to improve the Baxter Lane drainage. And, um, although, although that's a, a future project request we have coming up, you know, when, um, the county did some partial improvements in working with DOT to the Baxter Lane ditch last year, I think the water level dropped like two feet almost instantly when, when that was cleaned out. We've still got the obstruction there at the Baxter Lane extension, but, uh, as Dylan indicated, he's got right of entry agreements to fix that problem. And so that's coming as well. During the, um, pre-application conference, the school representative indicated the impact on the schools would be negligible based on the school being enlarged. Um, talk, you know, we still, we have three students that are, that are coming to the elementary school. Um, the students that are projected to come are not expected to actually arrive in the school until 2023.
Man, I guess about, because he just, the, we were just told that there's no room left.
Well, the expansion's supposed to be open in 2023.
The expansion's supposed to be open in 2023.
2023.
They said that's when the students would come.
Yes. But right now, they're full, I understand it.
Not a new school, a new addition.
A new addition, yes.
And not the van, we're talking about a school.
We're talking about that construction is slowed down, that means school construction too might be slowed down.
Well, residential construction, in answer to your question about the, how long it's taken, we were here with the rezoning request for Phases One and Two six years ago in 2015. So it's, it's taken a while, and residential construction is now taking, instead of four or five months, eight to 10 months to build a house, so that's why I'm saying we could not possibly produce any students until, or prior to 2023 from this addition. As we talked about, it's consistent with the adjacent development, it's already rezoned, drainage can be and will be improved concurrently. There was some discussion regarding spot zoning. As we indicated, the zoning district is not actually changing, and the change in zoning conditions is reasonable based on the size of the parcel, the compatibility with the comprehensive plan, the relationship between requested uses and existing uses on adjacent properties, benefits and detriments of rezoning for the landowners, neighbors, and community. You know, we have a slide to address each of those. We have 15 and a half acres of an existing 66.87 acre CMXR district, so this is about a little over 25% of that zoning district that we're talking about. The land use, as Donna indicated, was found to be consistent with the Moyoc Small Area Plan and will be consistent with the land use plan upon the, that change being adopted concurrently. In terms of the relationship, it continues the development pattern with density, same density and lot sizes that are already there in this district. Other benefits include the tree buffer that will be enhanced to both the south and east, efficient use of county resources and utilities while providing additional housing that's needed in the growing area, and we will enhance the drainage by working, as we've talked about, to provide another drainage outlet to the east. So this request does not present an impermissible spot zoning request. And this last slide then just shows you what the project will be. At build-out, it just completes, or takes it to its logical conclusion. I'd be glad to answer any other questions.
I have one question. The land use plan identifies this property as rural, correct?
Correct.
And the small area plan says it's full service, correct? So if I understand you correctly, we should put more emphasis on what the Moyoc Small Area Plan says, because that's what the people in the Moyoc area want, correct?
Can I ask, as far as the site work, as far as the back of, I guess it's Phase Two, I know we walked door-to-door when we had some break-ins in there, and some cars, there's no site work's been done, it's just all dirt, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, there's no.
In Phase Three?
Mm-hmm.
No, there was, there was some timber that was harvested a year or two ago back there, but no actual site work's been done.
The, I mean, I like the drainage improvements, the only concern I have is just to ensure that before the schools are ready for any more students, that we don't develop any students, because there could be a delay in the school building too, we still don't know. That's the part that concerns me about this, just, I mean, the rest of it, I mean, to me looks fine, but I'm just, again, I just heard that it was full, they can't, they're full of students, and yes, they're going to be, yes, we're going to have that done 2023, but what happens if it goes midway into 2023, 2024? I mean, I hate to put a timeline on this saying yes, and that we're going to be ready by 20, but the way things are going now, and I know with equipment too, it's, it's a hit and miss with, with building stuff going on right now.
But, but we're just asking for the rezoning right now.
Yeah, no, no, okay.
And then we would have to come back after we do the design and ask for a special use permit, and I, you know, and we have to meet the, the actual adequate public facilities test there, and you can put phasing on it.
Okay, I just, I mean, that, that was my concern with the development right here, so, did you want to say something?
I was just going to say, this, the rezoning stage is all we're at now.
Would that be, I mean, I know we're just at the rezoning stage, would that be something that the developer, I mean, if it was seven and, I mean, 14's a small number, it's three kids, I mean, I'm just, I know we're not at that stage, I mean, so I just was.
Three kids isn't a small number when it's your kid, and classrooms are crowded.
Mr. McCree, we are supposed to meet with the school board later in October and then get a status kind of update in November, is that correct, on where we are at, or at that time in October, we would have, where we're at, where the project's really at for Moyoc Elementary, is that correct?
Well, as I reported to you on Friday, we are expecting the, or I guess we do, have received the 65% design for both school projects, we've not yet seen the cost. On October 14th, staff is meeting with the design builder, at which time, I guess, we'll be discussing the, I'm looking at Rebecca, discussing the, the expected, or the predicted costs at 65% design for Moyoc Elementary School, and then on October 28th, staff will again be meeting with the design builder to get the numbers for the projected costs at 65% of the Moyoc Middle School project. So that, that's coming up, and then we are expected to meet with the school board either October 26 or 27. Reminder, please respond to Sam's email to let her know when you're available, at which time, you heard Dr. Lutz say they're presenting their facility study that they have had commissioned, and its results, it's looking forward as to what might be expected school needs going forward. So that there are, within the next month, several weeks, a lot of information that'll be coming to you about two pending school renovation projects, and then ongoing needs of, for school facilities.
Okay, so with that being said, Mr. Bissell, where would you guys be on this middle, on the next phase of this? Say this passes tonight, when do you guys plan on coming into us for the rest of this, the use permit, the plat, and all that stuff?
My guess is that it'd be about three months before we could get back to you for the, with the next phase of it. So it'd be three, three months, you said?
So we'll have time to have this meeting with the school board, have discussions, understand where we're at physically, financed, fiscally, and how these projects are proceeding prior to any other approvals.
So, conditions could be put on, anything for timeframes and phasing and all at that point.
Actually, it's probably going to be four months, because there's actually an extra T, an extra TRC meeting that we, that you have in the schedule now.
Mark likes to take December off too, right?
He goes to Florida.
But I understand, like I said, I understand it's his zoning, I just, that was my whole concern, is, and I guess I'd answer that, when you become before, it's about four months, or anything else.
Any questions for the applicant right now? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I am going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. I have one person signed up, and if I mispronounce your name, please apologize, I apologize now. Is it Betrel Bright Lomax?
Correct.
Oh, wow. Good. If you just state your name and your address for the record.
Yes, my name is Betrel Bright Lomax, and my address is 433 Neck Road, Chesapeake, Virginia. Our property is located in adjacent to the new development they would like to put. With the red line crosses, across the board there, one part is our land, which is Bryce, and the next is Jamie Jarvis's land, which is right adjacent to us. As of today, I have not received any type of notification about a drainage. I don't know about Jamie, and we are really close partners as far as farmers, and if we would know what's going on as far as the drainage system, that's right next to our land, and we are A1, and we do see a farm. Not only do we farm corn and peas, we also have a hemp farm that we're registered with. So, in the next coming months or so, we'll be putting up a tower, a tunnel, to do our hemp, and it's the first flat farmers in the city of Chesapeake, and we also register in the city, in Currituck County. So we just want to make sure the drainage system is up to par for that part of the land. Right now, we're in Chesapeake, we're registered farmers, so we are getting our license, continuing our license in, in Currituck County. So we just want to make sure they know what's going on, which is right across the field, and if I can look from Neck Road on my farm, I can see the houses. At one point in time, it wasn't like that, it was just all field, all woods, so that barrier is not there no longer. If I can see the house from Virginia to North Carolina, from Baxter Road, it's too thin. And so we have security up, but still, I just want to let the residents know what's going on with the two parcels, because we have one big part of land that's split in two states, so I pay taxes in both states, with one big part of land. So I just want to let you all know, and Jamie and I are partner, partner farmers, and I haven't talked to him yet about this drainage system, but I will talk to him tomorrow about that, and thank you.
Can I ask you a question, ma'am? How many acres do you own in Currituck?
Currituck, we own 112 acres, and the remainder 24 acres is in Chesapeake, and all of it's one big piece.
Are y'all going to, are you going to get your hemp license in?
Yes, our land is one big number, which is 17, 13, and we register everything in Chesapeake. And we've talked to the people here, it's to continue what you've been doing for the last 50 years. But we still want to make sure we're doing correctly what we need to do, but we are registered hemp farmers, and we are licensed in the city of Chesapeake. We're the first black women to do that. So we checked with Currituck before we put the first seed in the ground in 2019.
So y'all are, I think we have three or four, it was actually in our in-service training in Currituck County, for the Sheriff's Department, how many hemp farmers there were in Currituck County? I believe there's three.
Yes, we have one big.
So you're one of the three?
We want, well, with Cedar Chesapeake, we report everything to them, even North Carolina corn, peas, because it's one farm number. And that one farm number, we automatically did, Chesapeake, my grandfather did it 60 years ago, so we continue on with that. But we made sure, what did we do from Currituck County before we put our first seed in the ground in 2019? They said, keep your farm number and report to City of Chesapeake. And that's what we did, but we still pay taxes in both land, both states.
It's crazy that Chesapeake wants to know everything that they're doing, they're trying to double tax you, probably, no?
They do, and we just want to make sure, we, it's a team of four of us, my brother who's a retired stick trooper, my cousin that's a chemist, and my other cousin graduated from ENT with a degree in communications. So we all work together, but we make sure we're legal before we do anything, because we don't want anyone coming telling us we have to take everything up off the ground. So with that, we're just making sure, you know, we came here first, Cedar Chesapeake, we're registered, just to make sure what's going on, and that you all know what we're doing in the midst of, of development and drainage system. You know, hemp doesn't like water, so we just want to make sure everything is okay with that.
Well, I'm sure the applicant will get with you.
Yeah, I have a feeling they're going to be talking to you real quick.
Yeah, to, to make sure you understand what's going on there.
Yes.
Well, we appreciate you coming up and bringing that to our attention.
Right, thank you so much, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no one else signed up for a public hearing in this matter. If you haven't signed up and would you like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
I was just going to answer Commissioner White's.
Well, go ahead and state your name.
Our schedule shows us being back here if no hiccups in March, February, March, I'm afraid.
Well, just for the record, you spoke in public hearing, so can you state your name and address for the record?
Justin Old, 131 Springall Lane.
Thank you.
I didn't, I didn't hear what he said, he said March?
February, March, I'm working with Commissioner White.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone else who did not sign up and would like to speak at public comment? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this, and the staff, did you?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add some additional information for Commissioner Jarvis regarding the timeline on the development of Windswept Pines, if that's okay?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So the conditional zoning application came in in 2015. The use permit was issued in 2016. First house was CO'd in 2018, and the last house was CO'd in 2020.
15 to 5 and 8 years.
All right, well, yes.
Well, she is, Ms. Ball, go over the conditions again that have been agreed upon with the developer.
So you have the five conditions listed here to which the applicant proposed, that the use will be a subdivision, all lots will be greater than or equal to 20,000 square feet in area, the model storm will be designed, the 100-year storm event and the stormwater will be managed from that 100-year storm, so where it says 10, it's actually 100. The applicant will work with Soil and Water Conservation Department to explore improving the drainage outlet to the east of the development, and all residential development will be single-family and will conform to the sample building elevations provided, and they also agreed to the third condition that, or the last condition, that no parking signage will be installed in Phase Three at locations suggested by the fire official.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll ask the, the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like this to be tabled until we meet with the school boards because of the adequate public facilities, we're way over the numbers, and let them come back in November, that'll give us a chance to meet with the school boards and find out exactly what's going on in the county.
Okay, I have a motion for Ms. Etheridge to delay this action until, to the first meeting in November, or is that, or to postpone the?
I guess, since your intent is to set a specific meeting.
November the first, or the?
15th.
First meeting in?
First or second meeting in November is, I mean, what, whatever you intend.
Well, the first or the 15th.
The 15th.
15th of November. Okay, we have a motion to move this to the 15th, a lot of time to meet with the school board to have a good understanding, I guess, of the accurate public.
I have a question for the county attorney. This would mean re-advertising the public hearings, since it's already been closed because of additional information to be brought forward.
Well, you've already, you've already closed a public hearing, there's no necessity that it be reopened. This, of course, is a legislative matter, so the board may consider any information that it receives in making its ultimate decision.
Okay, any other, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion in this motion? Okay, I guess I'll call for a vote, all in favor of taking this back up in November 15th meeting after the school board, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Okay, and the motion fails. I'll ask for another motion. Do we have another motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm willing to move for approval, hereby adopt by resolution and move to approve PB 21-15, because the request is consistent with and amends the 2006 land use plan by designating this property as full service on the future land use map, because the amendment recognizes and implements the full service designation of the Moyoc Small Area Plan adopted by the Board of Commissioners. The proposed gross density allocation of Phases Three is 0.90 dwelling units per acre is in keeping with the full service designation of the Moyoc Small Area Plan. The designation identifies areas where there will be significant public investment in infrastructure and can support higher density of development. MSAP policy FLU1 promotes compatibility between the new development and existing development to avoid adverse impacts to. To avoid adverse impacts to the existing community. I think the drainage issues that we've talked about, this really addresses that. The request is reasonable and in keeping with changed conditions acknowledged by the Moyoc Small Area Plan. And addresses the demonstrated community need of providing a full service area that is, that offers both residential and commercial uses in the development. The conditions of approval, the applicant does not propose any changes to the zoning conditions of approval. Use will be a subdivision. Two, all lots will be greater than or equal to twenty thousand square feet. The project engineer will model storm water to a hundred-year storm event and storm water will be managed from that one hundred-year storm. The applicant will work with Soil and Water Conservation Department to explore improving the drainage outlet to the east of the development. All residential development will be single-family and will conform to sample building elevations provided. No parking signage will be installed in Phase Three at locations suggested by the fire office.
Mr. Chairman.
Also, based on the, uh, unanimous approval by the planning board and TRC recommending approval.
Can I add one thing or ask if he can add one thing before I would? The repairing of the culvert at the end of Baxter, which I believe the engineer said they would, they would do at the same time during the development. Could that be added as a condition? Cause I don't see that on here.
If, 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 if.
I agree.
Jesus, okay, you wanna add that portion for the?
Remember, remember, the applicant will also have to agree to that condition.
Does the applicant agree to have that added to there?
That was, we were agreeing, or we were doing the, the.
I guess it'd be the northern, uh, improvements where that red line was, that Dylan's been working on. The Baxter station was, or the Baxter lane ditch over was a condition on another, uh, project.
But that's, it's only been approved.
We're, we're in agreeance to, for the drainage that.
Dylan's working on.
Yes, that Dylan's been working on.
So, so you, so, Mr. Rethers, you wanted to?
The drainage that, um, improvements that Mr. Old just mentioned.
Regarding the?
The northern.
Northern from Baxter Lane and. Okay, I'll have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussions on the motion?
I just, I just, before we vote, I would just like to say that I feel like we don't have all the information we need to make a good decision. And I, I just believe when decisions are made, they shouldn't be rushed. And that I really believe having all the information helps us make better decisions. And I just don't think we're doing that here. That's all.
Thank you. Any, uh, any further discussions?
I would agree with Mrs. Jarvis if this was special use permit. But this is a legislative decision. And we'll have a second, third bite of it at the special use permit in February or March.
To add conditions.
Yes.
That's when it would be prudent for them to have their plan together, show all the material details of that.
And then we'll also have the information from the schools.
We'll be, we'll be in a better spot for where the schools are at. And if they're not, if the schools are not gonna be ready at the projected time, then we can, we can deal with that issue when it comes up at that time. Whether it be to set phasing for this project or whatever the case may be.
And they'll meet with the, the farmer that she spoke at the end to, to make sure everything's in agreeance for that as well, to look out for her.
Yep.
All right, any, uh, other discussions? Okay, I'm gonna go and ask the board for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five to one. Thank you. Uh, let me ask the board, would they, do they, would the board need a, a quick recess really quick?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take a quick five-minute recess before we get into the next item. And, uh, the next item on the agenda is PB twenty-one dash seventeen. U.S. Miller. The, yeah, fourth request for convent, uh, conventional zoning, uh, one sixty-two point five acres from Agriculture AG and General Business GB to Singer Family Residential Mainland SFM, leaving two point five acres GB. The property is located in Barco Tax Map seventy, parcels thirty-seven through forty Crawford Township.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, one correction that I want to make in the staff report, there was an update that didn't make it to your packets. But, um, Mr. Sam Miller doesn't own the property. He has a contract to purchase the property. It's actually, um, known as the Hampton Ayers Division. So the current owners, according to the tax rolls, are Newton Hampton, Charles Jones, Jr., Paula Vest, and Jennifer Kay. And I apologize, that update did not, um, carry forward appropriately. Um, just, uh, zoomed out view, um, of this property, it is in Barco. And just to give you an idea, this is the intersection of Shortcut Road and Keritoke Highway. This cluster of buildings you see here is the high school. And then to the east is the Coin Drop Bay. And when we zoom in, you can see the, the high school, middle school campus a little better there. So it is just south of that. And when you look at the property, it's currently zoned agricultural for the most part. Um, and then the very front near Keritoke Highway is in fact zoned general business. Yes.
Where the general business, is that where the therapy place is?
No, the therapy place, I believe, is adjoining it in this area.
Okay. I was just trying to get an exact.
I guess where the mossy oak sign is.
Oh, is that the one?
Yeah.
Um, when you look at the land use plan, you can see, um, the rear portion, there's a stand of trees there if you're familiar with the property. That is owned, um, I'm sorry, it is designated as conservation in the rear there. And, uh, the, um, developer has since had a wetland determination done. And it sounds like this line is pretty accurate, that, um, that that is the wetland area that was captured, that conservation district. And then the remainder of the property closer to Keritoke Highway is, um, classified as full service. And this is just based on soils maps alone, um, with a general idea of where the wetlands are on the property. And the, um, developer has had a delineation done since that will be more specific. Um, this is a better snapshot of what the developer is requesting. He's requesting that, is that showing with his blue? Um, the blue portion of the property would be zoned, um, single-family mainland. And then the small portion up to the front, that'll be about two and a half acres, um, would remain general business. Um, and again, this is, uh, a hundred and sixty-five acres. Um, and the applicant, you'll hear me say conventional zoning or straight zoning. And that is, um, we'll say a different method to rezone than what you just saw as a, uh, conditional zoning request. This would be a straight rezoning request to allow for all the uses that are allowed in the single-family mainland and general business zoning districts.
Tammy.
So, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, again, just real quick then, with conventional zoning, um, if I'm not mistaken, you cannot put any constrictions in a conditional zoning, is that correct?
That is correct. Um, with a conventional zoning, the, let me say it a different way. With, um, have a slide. With conditional zoning, the board's allowed to legally put conditions on the property, on the development. But the applicant has to agree to those. And the same, the applicant can propose conditions that the board would agree to. But with a straight rezoning or conventional zoning that's being requested, even if the applicant says, I will keep the lots a certain size, I'll preserve the wetlands. That's not something you can contractually obligate them to do through, through a straight rezoning.
And my question was, I think this is the first time I've had a conventional rezoning.
Let me get to that slide really quickly.
Yeah, you're very limited what you can.
Okay, so, I'll start with the, um, you're absolutely correct. It's illegal to impose conditions on rezonings, um, to conventional zonings, or sometimes you'll hear that called a straight rezoning. And let me get to, okay, so, Ms. Kitty, to your question. Conventional zoning to this point as directed by a previous board, and some of you are, were a member of that board as well. Were for downzoning properties. So let's say you had an HI property that you wanted to zone to, um, SFM. You could do that because that would be considered a downzoning. And you can do that through a straight or conventional rezoning. If you had a bifurcated zoning district, and what that means is you have two districts on your property. Say you have the SFM and the GB, and you want to make it all one. That you could do through a straight rezoning. And then the most recent one that was adopted was, um, a piece of property that had the same zoning district on all three sides. So since two thousand and seven, when the, um, convent, when the conditional zoning was adopted. That's, that's the only straight rezonings or conventional rezonings that you've seen. One of the things that the board asked us to do, or retreat or two ago, was to, to provide you with a density comparison of how the property could be developed today without any rezoning. Based on the request that's before you, what, what could come of the, the development. Now, I will tell you that these are just very generic numbers to be used for reference purposes only. Without knowing the layout of the development, the layout of infrastructure, soil suitability, um, or anything like that. This is just raw data, and it's just meant for information purposes only, and is certainly not exact. But the developer could develop the property today in the agricultural zoning district. That's the piece that we'll talk about. Um, it would have to be a conservation subdivision, so there would be assurances to preserve that wetland area. There are two choices. Um, they could choose to go with a fifty percent open space or sixty percent open space. If you go with the fifty percent open space, your density is a little lower, point three-three units per acre. Where if you choose to bump up that open space to sixty percent, it would be point four units per acre. Both would have the minimum lot size of thirty thousand square feet. And with those choices, you're looking at somewhere, let's say fifty to sixty lots, fifty-two to sixty-two lots. Again, just, just for reference purposes only, that's not examining the, the layout of land or any details. With the request that's before you, um, there would also be two options to develop the property. One would be as a traditional subdivision, and the other would be, um, with a conservation subdivision. The lot sizes are different. Um, the traditional would be forty thousand square feet, while the conservation would be a minimum lot size of twenty-five thousand square feet. Um, and based on the densities allowed in the land use plan and the UDO. If, if it was rezoned to SFM, you can see that there's a substantial density increase for the property. Anywhere from about ninety-eight to a hundred and four, um, lots compared to that fifty-two to sixty-two. Um, the land use plan does classify this, as we saw on the map, um, as full service and conservation. And it's with, I always run these words together, so forgive me, the Barco Coin Drop Airport Subarea. The subarea is sparsely developed, um, at about one unit per acre for that, for that Barco Coin Drop Airport Subarea. But the land use plan does indicate that there are ingredients in place for this to become a community center for the land, for the mainland. The full service areas are those parts of the county where infrastructure investments have been made and/or will be available for public use or private use. And of course, that conservation area, um, is intended to be managed and to protect the significant limited or irreplaceable areas. And the, um, UDO calls out that the property management is needed to conserve the natural, cultural, recreational, scenic, and biologically productive values of the property. And there are several land use plans policies that are relevant, or that are related to a straight zoning map amendment request. Um, I'm not gonna read those to you, they're called out in your, in your packet. Um, we've, we've talked about this slide. Just a reminder that it is illegal to impose conditions on a conventional rezoning request such as this. Um, and just to, for example, um, the developer has stated that he'll have approximately eighty lots, that he'll provide a water access to Coin Drop Bay. And that he'll retain, retain the trees in the wetland area. Well, that's, that's good that he says he's gonna do those things, but there's, that's not something you can hold him to with a straight rezoning request. The board has guidelines in the UDO, um, that are standards to be, to be considered, um, when you're rezoning property. I won't read all of those to you, I'm sure y'all probably have them memorized by now, but, and you'll see, um, part of the last discussion. Number, number nine would result in development that is adequately served by public facilities. So that's where the UDO does allow you to consider such things as adequate public facilities with a rezoning request. You've just got more updated than my chart here. You got live, um, in person. Um, and as the superintendent stated, um, well, I will say that this is currently districted to Central Elementary School. And as the superintendent just stated, um, Central is at capacity without additional room.
So, so this would go, so this would go to, not, not to Griggs then, right?
Central.
It may be redistricted to Griggs, but.
But right now, it's designated to, okay, to, to Central.
Yes, sir. So, and then the numbers you heard are much more accurate than, than mine from May.
Heard it's a middle school, too.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So there would potentially need to be some redistricting there, but that's certainly something the school would address. Um, and some concerns that we've just discussed, um, with the straight rezoning. Is a straight rezoning, uh, allowed for a subdivision? Sure. You're gonna get the minimum standards that are required in the UDO. And to this point, the board has wanted to see more than that. So therefore, the conditional zoning, um, has been in place for subdivisions to this point. And that allows the BOC and the applicant to agree on conditions that, um, that may make the project more desirable to adjoining property owners. Vistas from Currituck Highway or Keritoke Highway and those kinds of things. When you have a conditional zoning in place, that provides some predictability to ensure that your development will conform to the land use plan. Without a plan to review, I cannot tell you if it would be compatible or not. Um, I can tell you it would have to meet the minimum standards of the ordinance, but that would be it. Let's see. There are also, one of the things you can do with a conditional zoning is to prohibit uses that might not be the best suited for that area or for that property. And for example, some potential conflicting uses that could occur in the GB and SFM would be perhaps a parking lot, a bar, nightclub, lounge, a pawn shop. Civil culture or clear cutting of that, um, heavily vegetated area. According to the UDO, the purpose of the SFM district is to accommodate low-density residential neighborhoods and supporting uses. The district intent in the UDO is to accommodate residential development in ways that will not interfere with agriculture and agricultural activity. Interrupt Santa vistas from Keritoke Highway or place undue stress on county, county's educational infrastructure. And of course, the purpose of the GB district is to accommodate a wide variety of, um, residential and non-residential uses.
Yeah, let me, um, just ask a question, maybe to the county attorney then. So, if the applicant tells us tonight that they're not gonna do this, or they won't do that, or propose this. He really can't say that with convention, is that correct? Because he's, he's allowed to do anything.
You should disregard that because, uh, you, you, the only thing you should be considering is all the potential uses in the relevant zones. Because. all the potential uses in the relevant zones, because if approved, then this current applicant or the property would be sold, a subsequent owner would be allowed to, for any of the uses that are listed, and general businesses. That's correct.
Okay.
Now, far as if it was approved and not, just throwing that out there, it was, as far as like what she said, and I remember when I was actually a part of that 2013 with the UDO, then if they, they have the, a few slides back, I had to ask, but they have that, those requirements under the UDO, all far as the single-family mainland and the GB, correct? Maybe a couple more back. That one.
Tell me then.
What's your question?
So my question was, if just a straight rezoning was approved, and they requested single-family mainland, they could get 40,000 square foot lots, 98, traditional, or 104? Is, I mean, that's part of the UDO, is that what I took from that?
Yeah, that's what's allowed in the UDO, if the rezoning...
That's allowed. And then the general business, like you said, it's anything off that big list that we have before.
Right, in the back of that staff report, anything on that list.
And plus, there are other things that are permitted in the single-family mainland district as well, other than just single-family residences, and that table is attached to the staff's analysis.
And just to continue, without a master plan like required with the conditional zoning district, it's not possible at this point to verify consistency with the policies and some of the policies in the land use plan, and I've listed a few there. And it's not possible to verify consistency with some of those zoning map amendment review standards that were on the previous slide. And with that being said, I mean, this is near your high school and middle school campus, a low-density, single-family neighborhood, for lack of a better word. It abuts a major thoroughfare, so you want the best and most well-planned development possible. The UDO does have those minimum standards, and it just depends on if the board is comfortable with the minimum standards of the UDO, or if they're any of the conditions that you would want to place on the project. The staff recommended that the applicant resubmit this request as a conditional zoning application, with a plan that it's more conceptual in nature. And a conceptual plan can provide flexibility for the applicant with assurances that the application maintains the community values and consistency with officially adopted plans. On September 15th, the planning board considered this request and recommended approval as presented with the vote of five to one. Now, there were some really good discussions that were held at the planning board that I wanted to share with you. The planning board asked staff what type of conditions the board commissioners may place on this development in this location, should it come back as a conditional zoning request. I can't tell you all of them, or if any of these are relevant, but these would be in the wheelhouse of a development like this located in this area. That it would potentially require a conservation subdivision, preservation of the wetland area, and then you'll see the land use plan policies behind these that support each of these potential conditions. It would provide water access to the Coinjock Bay, to all the lots in the development. It could prohibit the clear cutting of the stand of trees at the rear of the property and the wetlands. It could potentially remove the allowance for potentially incompatible uses, and those that we went through previously. Sometimes the board will ask for an increased buffer, say, from adjoining properties, or from Kerituck Highway, to make it more compatible with the area. There has been minimum lot sizes set, maximum number of lots allowed, and the conditional zoning would also allow that phasing plan based on milestones of completions for county facilities. So the exact discussion you were having with the previous case, you would, you could make a condition that the development would not outpace schools, or any other waters, or any other county public facility. Another thing that was, the planning board was interested in, that was a really good conversation, was, first of all, why not a conditional zoning request? Well, the applicant brought forward the concern that as they make changes, they have to come back and go through the entire process over to change the plan. So what I wanted to go over with you is what the UDO says about modifications to the plan. The planning director is allowed to improve, to approve what's considered a minor modification to the plan. Now, the UDO does call out some things as examples, that would be considered minor modifications, and they're listed there as driveway locations, structure floor plan revisions, minor shift in building size or location, and facility design modifications for amenities and the like. But when you read the whole paragraph, it explains that those are just examples. And a minor modification is defined as a modification that can be approved by the director, and it, and that change does not materially affect the basic configuration of the approved conceptual development plan, provided that such modifications are limited to changes addressing technical considerations that could not reasonably be anticipated during the conditional zoning classification process, or any other change that has no material effect on the character of the approved development. So, in other words, each change, if changes need to be made to the plan, the planning director would determine whether that change is minor and meets that intent of this section of the ordinance, or if it's considered a major change that would come back before the board, that would require that conditional zoning district to be rehearsed and amended. That's all I have. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer those.
Board have any questions at this time? Okay, all right, here none. Thank you. I'll ask the applicant if they can come forward,
Let me make sure I get this right, so I don't get in trouble by the mic. My name is Sam Miller. I live at 150 Baxter Estates Road, Moayok, North Carolina.
Think you'd better pitch us on what you're proposing, and why we should approve this.
I understand. And I understand this is not something you hear a lot, and for the record, it's the second time you've heard one from me. I came forward and did another one going to a straight GB as well. And there were reasons for that. Some are similar, some are different. And I'm not against conventional, or against conditional. I think they both have their purpose, and they both have their place. And my goal tonight is to express to you why that's the case. We do have a large list of ordinances, a unified development ordinance, in fact, and it prescribes how we're to develop, where it is proposed to be developed in accordance with land use plans. We have technical review committee processes, where there's people, no disrespect to y'all here on the board, but who deal with the stormwater on a daily basis, who deal with the utilities, who deal with the setbacks, and all those types of things. And we have an interactive discussion on a technical level, where we talk about, how does this work, and what are the problems associated with those types of things. And that's what happens in technical review, and that's a lot of what we do. And it involves this staff, involves engineering, involves private engineering, stormwater, Dylan Lloyd, et cetera. And that's the great part of the process. And we have things outlined of what we're to follow, and how we're supposed to do those types of things. But let me back up and kind of walk through this as well, the same way Ms. Glave walked through it, and try to give my perspective on it, because I think that's important for us to do, too. If I walk through the project, we took a look at it, and it is over 160 acres. It has more GB than what we're asking. We're actually asking to reduce the general business. So if there's concerns with bars and nightclubs, and other things that are associated in GB, let's be clear, the whole corridor, including the high school and the middle school, is all GB. And it's not conditional GB, but it's straight GB, all the way down to the bridge, and probably even further than that, on both sides of the road, of which was done by land use plans, and staff, and others putting that together. So if we're concerned about a nightclub on this piece of property, we should be concerned about it on every piece of property up and down that section, because none of that has conditions on it. It's all straight GB. We're actually reducing the amount of GB that we're asking for. So if anything, the nightclub will be smaller.
Are you going to run that knob skin?
I mean, I'm just speaking the facts. It's not my intent, and, you know, I can walk out of here and get killed on my way to my truck, and somebody else can assume the contract, and they can decide to put a nightclub in. We all know that's all plausible and could happen. But at the end of the day, there's plenty of property for sale, and there aren't nightclubs going in left and right over there. So, and everything to the left and to the right, you can do the same thing. And we're talking about creating less GB. So I just want to kind of address that, first of all. So if anything, we're making a problem better, not worse. We have gone through, and we've had a wetland consultant come out, and we've taken a look at the property. And in fact, the area that the county has prescribed is actually, underestimates it. The wetlands are pretty much right at the tree line. And in your packet, if you have a map that looks something like this, you'll see a dashed line, and it says, it notes it, approximate wetlands. So basically, everything that's treed is wetlands. You pretty much step inside the tree area, a few feet in some cases, sometimes even a little bit outside of that, it's all wet. What does that mean? I don't know if any of you all know KAMA, or the Army Corps. It's a very one-sided discussion with them. And so while there's things that, yes, you can do with wetlands, it's a very challenging situation. And for the purpose of rezoning SFM, we're not going to be able to put houses there. Could you come in and cut trees down? Sure. As a developer, we do this as a business. We don't do it as a hobby. So why would we go in and cut trees down, just to cut trees down? There's not, there's not really a huge market for that kind of wood that's there. And in doing so, we open ourselves to violations. Each tree, at a seven-year size, consumes approximately 100 gallons of water per day. So I can use those wetlands for stormwater management, because it crowns down to that property. As it goes towards the sound, there's a high crown that runs through the property. It's just an economic decision. I'm not going to spend money to cut trees down, just to cut trees down. They consume wetland, you know, water, they help improve the, any erosion and sedimentation, they capture the sedimentation basin, they basically make development cheaper next to wetlands, because you can discharge to that. And you don't have to have the BMPs dug as deep and big, because they consume so much water. And then on top of that, it's attributable to the sound. So we have our own natural outfall. It's a great stormwater plan from a technical point of view. Cutting the trees down destroys that. While I know Ms. Glave took a look at some of the numbers, if you don't realize what the wetland impact is, yeah, you can make calculations to probably come up with 98 to 104 lots. But when we get to that, and we use the same calculations, and using a max density of after the available space that's left, basically, we can calculate about 80 lots. Maybe it's 79, maybe it's 81, but there's no way to get anywhere close near 104, not even close to 98. We calculate, the best we can do is 80 lots. And that's plus or minus a lot or two. Keep in mind, we're doing some sketch calculations. But that's after subtracting the wetlands. So if you don't do that, and you don't have those numbers, yeah, you could estimate it a lot higher. But that's not really what's capable and plausible. So you compare that, right now, it's currently ag, and right now, we could do 62 lots, without asking for any permissions or those types of things in moving forward. So we're talking about going to 80 lots, which would be an increase of 18. Now, again, it's not a condition that we're putting forward, and we're not asking for conditional, but it's just the math of it. If you subtract what's left, that's what's As far as some of the statements about, we cannot ensure that this subdivision would comply with the land use plan. Quite honestly, that's really on us as developers and engineers. As we bring this forward to TRC, part of the process of TRC is to make sure it complies with the land use plan. Is that correct? So we do that. Conditional zoning does not ensure that a subdivision complies with a land use plan. That's not the ultimate goal, because we could use, to Ms. Glave's point, a very conservative sketch, that said, you know, it's very basic, and otherwise. Now, there may be things that you ask for with it, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we put in their condition that it complies with the land use plan. That's something that we review at TRC. So it's not like we're skipping that step, or ignoring it, or doing those things. It happens in technical review.
But as far as conditions, as far as if we wanted more buffer, denser buffers, higher visualization, that's a stipulation we couldn't put in there?
That's correct, because we're not asking for...
Correct. But we couldn't ask for that either, though.
Agreed.
Okay.
Can I, how many acres is wetland? I don't remember if Tammy, if she said that or not.
My map's too small for me to read at this point.
That's why I was trying to zoom in on my computer.
It's almost the entire two rear parcels. If you have GIS, we could...
I'd say it's fair to say half.
Half.
Yeah, it's pretty close to half, I'm looking at it just off the hip.
Thank you, I was just curious. Okay. I mean, if you've got 164, you take two and a half out for GB, let's say you got 90 left, some of that goes for roads, how many houses are you really going to put there?
So that begs the question, while you're at this point, Sam, why not condition it? Why not, why not away, you know, because...
I get it.
...the concerns of this board, if you cannot do but so much.
Okay, I get it, and I think I can try to answer that, too.
Okay.
We had our community meeting, and we had two people show up. And we talked about how their family used to own it years ago, and how, you know, they're sorry to see it go into something, but they knew when they sold it, that something would happen with it. And that was the community meeting. And that was with one of the Ambrose relations. And then actually, I got to, I kind of spent some time with Mr. Morris, Travis Morris, over the years, we were, we did business together for a while, with Currituck Realty, when he was doing that. So it was neat to get to know one of his daughters, a little bit, and just speak with her. So that was the other person who showed up for that. When we came to the planning board meeting, I asked the same question. I said, who signed up to speak? And, Mr. Chairman, do you know if anybody signed up to speak tonight?
Not at this point, no.
Okay.
Unless there's somebody who hasn't signed up, yes.
Would it be okay if we ask if anyone signed up, or would like to speak that hasn't?
Well, I mean, we will get to that.
But I guess to my point, we had two people show up to the meeting. It wasn't a discussion about, you know, you shouldn't do that, or there wasn't any confrontation, there were no, what about this, what about that, you know, have you thought about these issues? We went to the planning board meeting. Again, no one showed up, no one spoke. We asked at the meeting if anybody there wanted to speak, even though they didn't sign up. Nobody spoke. We advertise for these meetings. We've received no phone calls, no emails, no communication whatsoever about what to do with it. And again, tonight, I think we're in the same boat. Again, nobody has showed up to ask us to do anything different, or concerns about it. If I look to the north and south of this property, it's vacant, it's farmland that we farm right now. The landowner who's selling the property, one of the landowners, he actually will live in front of it, and understands exactly what our plans are with the property, and has contractually obligated and signed documents to allow us to come here and do this tonight, which we presented to staff, and provided as proof that, and evidence that they have given us permission to do this. And this is all landowners, not only just the one who lives in front of it. And then, I live in the county, and I've got three kids here. And two of them go to those schools right there. And I've got a third one that will be there faster than I know it, and my wife and I'll be wondering what to do at home anymore. But all that stuff aside, what else would we like to put next to a school? Houses seem like the only logical fit.
Well, then let me ask you this question. Would you agree or disagree that if this, well, the potential is there, that if this got zoned conventional, that it could potentially be... got zoned conventional, that it could potentially be sold to a different buyer and they could do something different?
I would agree that it could be sold to a different buyer. Now, what are the uses in SFM that any of you may have concern about?
I mean, there's a whole list of that, you know, that a potential new buyer, again.
Okay, but I mean, could we pick one that might be of concern in SFM? Because GB is already there and we're actually reducing the amount of GB.
Yeah, well, looking at the west, I don't think there's anything that's too offensive is probably what you're getting to. From a family care home to community center, cultural facility, library, which is right down the street.
We have one right next door.
Museum, childcare center, those types of things are not going to be probably pinging anyone's radar too bad.
Right. So I guess my point is, you know, I'm just looking at the process and I'm looking at the documentation we have. And I've been doing this for a number of years, as you all know. I live in the county. My kids go to school here. We do business here. We're very public about that. We're not, you know, I gave you my home address tonight. And, you know, we stand behind what we do. I understand I could die. I know I could sell it to somebody else. I know somebody else could do it. But we have a process and we have a UDO and it says, you need to do these things. And we're, we have excellent soils in this region. Here's a soils map. This isn't in color, but you can pull these pieces up here. We've also had the same person doing wetlands taking a look at soils. We have state, Bojack, Alta Vista. We have very high elevations. You can see that on the GIS as well. This property crowns up well. It drains very well to the sound. It's a great property to farm. Could talk to Mr., Mr. Hampton about it. I mean, it's just, all the things about it are very, very good for what we're intending to use it for. And for a lot of these practices, I mean, I'm making these statements, but I do qualify as a subject matter expert. We do, I do know more than the general populace about this as we do this profession. And those are structurally suitable soils, capable of minimum of 1,500 PSF, probably closer to 2,000. We're not going to see settlement issues. We're not going to see those things and those other problems associated with it. The last point that I make with, and I don't mean to cut you off as well.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Is, you know, when we talk about this, the last subdivision that I was part of and a very big part of that was done, that was done under conventional zoning. Does anyone know what it was?
Laurel Woods.
Laurel Woods Estates. Do you get calls about drainage in that subdivision? Do you get calls about problems in that subdivision for those things? Same types of soils, same types of elevation, same type of construction we're going for as well. It's the same exact subdivision process we're doing there. So if we do it in the right place and we follow the, what we've written down in the documents and do that stuff, which we do have, we have all these rules, I'm just saying, let's keep it simple and do what worked. So I mean, that's my, my point to it that, you know, why we don't necessarily need conditional zoning. And if there's a reason and somebody has a real reason to say, hey, this is a real concern we have, I might be open to it. But for one, two, three, on my fourth meeting, I've yet to get something that we don't really cover in TRC. And if there's something outside of that that we need to do, then it's a great thing. But there's no adjacent development. We're talking about houses down the street from the school, following an ordinance that we've written that says, these are the rules that you should follow. I'm not sure what I'm missing.
So everything you've discussed basically has been housing development?
Yes.
Okay, so if it's a housing development, then why wouldn't you want to do conditional zoning then?
Because it basically adds about four months to the process when we do it at a minimum.
Well, with the school conditions now, it's going to be minimum of that anyways, it sounds like.
Well, but we're, when we do these things, I mean, take a look at other things as well. Chairman payment, at Laurel Woods, we did that in four phases. We, we're planning on probably developing phasing with this as well. To develop 80 lots at one time on the scale of what we're talking about is well, well over seven figures. And to do that speculatively without selling any of that stuff is pretty aggressive. So we'll probably step into it in three or four pieces, whether this board suggests that or not at, when we have a special use hearing, assuming that tonight is a favorable outcome. So it's just, all these things, yeah, can you do it, I guess, but it just doesn't make any sense.
I, I guess that's just the part I'm struggling with is that, I mean, I've, everything I've heard is you want to do houses, you want to do developments in there. And most of our developments we've been talking about, you know, we've talked about buffers, drainage, certain things requiring to, and this is not going to allow any type of conditions to be put on it if it's just going to be a housing development, other than you gotta, we gotta just make sure you follow the current requirements. And I'm just trying to understand why, why you're asking to not, not for, not, why you want conventional versus condition. I just haven't, I don't think I understand that yet, why you'd want that if you're just talking housing developments and I just.
Well, I mean, that's what a, you know, SFM is.
And is you going to get any more benefit with a conventional versus conditions?
It, it's time and money. I mean, it really comes down to time and money.
That's it, just time and money.
I mean, well, everything really comes down to that when you do it because the, the benefit of it is, we talk about buffering. Well, what do we need to buffer against? We don't have anything next door to buffer to. And as far as buffering, we have a natural buffer in the rear that, you know, you could say we can cut it down, but I don't know why we would spend money to cut it down when we risk fines and violations from KAMA and the Army Corps. As far as drainage goes, these, this area drains phenomenally well. This isn't the same type of property like we talked about in the previous PB, the second item on, on the agenda tonight. This doesn't have that type of drainage issue. It has elevation issues that are positive in a good way. It has soils that drain well. It doesn't have existing drainage issues.
But part of the problem of rushing something is, once again, we, we have schools over capacity, at capacity. And to me, striking while the iron is hot, I get that with business, but it's not prudent when you're trying to look forward at what problems this haste could create. It also concerns me, while there's nothing on the adjacent properties now, that, that also is not looking towards the future. And a buffer is, to me, a very good way to make sure that you protect the future value of whatever will be developed to the north and the south of it.
A better question, Ms. Glave. Would, is there a, in the, in the UO currently, if we, if we approve this, not as he wanted, is there any conditions for a buffer to be placed in a neighborhood? What do you have to do, any kind of buffer which we need joining properties?
Since it's visible for car and driveway, we have to do some measurements for the first power supply and those things. There could be an additional buffer for car and driveway. And then would you abut a different zoning district? I don't even know. I don't have, oh, sorry.
I thought it was just me.
I'm sorry about that. When you abut a different zoning district, there could be a requirement there for, for buffering. I don't have the ordinance memorized, so I can't tell you what that would be right now. But you would not be able to enhance that buffering any.
You can place certain conditions at special use permit stage.
I was thinking that too. I just, you know, we haven't dealt with this, obviously, so we're not used to what is, what is just that. It's come to us and it's already been conditioned, it's already kind of been fixed and tweaked and polished, right?
Right, right.
He could theoretically come in with a conditional use and list everything that's allowed in SFM right now. So what have you accomplished?
Well, the, like, the, if, if it was purchased as ag land where he stated in there where, I mean, like, if he, if it, he could put 62 homes on there as ag land, correct? I mean, if it was just.
That's a very rough ballpark estimate because.
So I mean, maybe 50, 50, you know.
I'm, I'm not going to give you a number because I, I can't say without a master plan, seeing what they're doing and soil evaluations and so on and so forth. That's just a rough number based on just the, the raw land, the raw data.
I got you. Because like we, we say, that's why I asked the question on the wetlands. I was curious how much, so roughly 50% of it, of 160, so 80 acres is wetland?
That'd be a fair guess, I think.
Around that number, yeah. Like I said, I've hit that age where I need something to see that.
79 acres of open, yeah. Kind of a rough guess, but I don't know.
And that's an estimated, that's an estimated line too, so I can't read it either, but.
Yeah, I zoomed in on it, but it doesn't say.
I don't think it actually states.
Okay.
I got my other county computer. I zoomed in on it and you can see everything, but it doesn't state any numbers.
I mean, I think it's fair to say about half.
So when I, when I do all this, I just look at it and I go, we can do 62 today. I'm saying, we'd like to design it to the standards and do that stuff right now and do 80 because that's pretty much what it's going to work out to. And you should have the wetland report that was submitted to staff. So if you don't have that, if that was just, because I know you get a lot of stuff, I have that as well if you want, if you need to see that, but it's.
I don't think you have that. I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of that, so that wouldn't have been forwarded to you. I know it was in the process.
Here's a letter from environmental consultant and then here's a, a map and we picked up the survey points. So you have the map that there's.
I didn't bring copies for everyone, but it's, what Ms. Glave presented is the, I don't know that you have the report, but you have the, the line. And the line is really what is important.
Just give us a few minutes to get that passed around.
So when I looked at it, it's just a matter of, that's really all we can do. And considering that we don't have drainage situations and that we have natural buffering in the rear and we have a process to handle any other buffering in those pieces, and we haven't received any feedback from anybody that said, hey, will you consider this or do this? I'm not sure why, what conditions I would even suggest to impose because under conditional zoning, the applicant is to suggest the conditions. So I'm trying to take the voice of the customer and provide that and the customer has said So that's why I brought forward a straight rezoning.
Ms. Glave, under the conventional rezoning, they're only required to meet the minimum standards, is that correct?
Right, they would meet the minimum standards of the EDF and the land use plan and other adopted plans.
And again, we did that, those same standards with Laurel Woods Estates as well.
But as you said, you could get killed walking out the door.
But, but again, it's still the same rules, whether it's me or Mr. Smith or, you know, whoever does it. The rules are the rules and what I'm expressing is that those rules, whether I'm alive or dead, are the same rules that were used to develop Laurel Woods almost in their entirety.
And was Laurel Woods a straight rezone?
It was.
It was?
Yes.
What was that, 2000 and?
2006.
Did say that, didn't you?
It was prior to conditional zoning being in our ordinance.
But that would have been using the UDO as we have today, almost, except for amendments that have come forward.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you, what comments you made.
It didn't have conditional zoning in the ordinance when Laurel Woods came through, so that's why it was a straight rezoning. It was the only option at the time.
And that option wasn't, okay, conditional was, okay.
But what I'm getting at is that subdivision works and is, by all feedback I've received, a, a good subdivision.
Did I bring you the chance to look at that?
I did.
Okay.
Except for maybe the boat and RV stores, you might need a little more of that.
What's that?
You might need a little more boat and RV stores over there.
I think no matter how much boat and RV storage you have, it's never seems to be enough.
I mean, did you, were you finished or did you have more to add to it or?
I really don't have anything other than to continue to reiterate. I mean, I, I welcome the questions and the feedback. I just, I'm looking at it and I'm trying to look at it from a simplistic point of view and say, if we need to complicate the process, let's complicate it, but just please tell me why.
Since I was on the board when we adopted conditional zoning, we did it primarily for business earnings, not necessarily for residential. That was why we did it.
But, but this is going to be mostly residential usage.
Right.
And business is what you were after, right?
Yes.
To make sure you didn't have this nightclub next to the school, to make sure you didn't have.
I have a different recollection and Mr. Etheridge is probably right, but one of the primary reasons for it was for subdivisions as well.
Well, it was to address those subdivisions where you had general business in the front, residential in the back.
Which is what.
Because I'm the one that brought it forward.
Conditional zoning?
Yes.
Which, which what this.
That's what this is, right?
This is exactly that situation for Mullet.
I just think that with a conventional zoning, I, I just think that there's too many what-ifs. I think that it's not looking towards the future. I, I just believe that conditional zoning gives some protection to, of course, adjacent property owners and how that could be developed in the future. I know there's no objection to your proposal right now. I also believe conditional zoning is a protection for the people who would be potential home buyers in that subdivision. Just to make sure, I know you say that, and I trust you because you're an engineer and I have two children in that same vein. I, I know you're an expert in that content area, but, you know, we've, we've had engineers help design stormwater all over this county that would have problems and issues. And I just think a, a good set of eyes, a good set of conditions, a good set of vetting those conditions is a good protection for the future use of this land.
I do have one question to kind of different. We've got two different things happening here, sort of this. You've got your GB in there, which is wide open, and then you've got your SFM. And those, those uses have been defined by a very small number of things that can go in there. Is it, is it, is the board's concern more towards that something crazy could happen in the SFM or something could happen in the GB? So there is a, I'm, I'm wondering if there isn't a, a hybrid model here where you're talking, where you, you get into restricting some of the GB uses, right, so that we don't have the nightclub in there, we don't have, you know, to, and, and that maybe helps facilitate some of this discussion and also what takes place in front of your neighborhood.
Well, I think it also incorporates too, the conditions with the, the subdivision as, as.
Right, that's.
It's limited to what you can.
Phasing, which is important for our schools. Once again, buffering, stormwater, I can.
So where, what, Mr. Crey, when the use permit comes forward, there is some, Owen said it earlier, some conditions that can be placed on the use permit. At that point, do things like phasing come into play? What, what, what differentiates this, this straight rezoning?
You can place reasonable, conditions that are reasonably, reasonably related to use of the property, but of course, you also need to derive that from evidence as presented during the course of the hearing. So for example, if you wanted to phase, you would need, you would want to and need to be able to make findings from the evidence presented that phasing, phasing is necessary and appropriate based upon some piece of that. And that, for that piece of evidence might be that, assuming it's competent, when, when presented to the board, that piece of evidence may be that the school capacity numbers exceed that which has been approved or recognized by the school board.
Okay.
So we.
I know that was a discussion when we did Laurel Woods in 2006. Phasing was put onto that and I actually came back to the board later when we developed it and asked for that phasing to be changed and removed and it was, it was done so at that point back in 2006. that point, back in 2011, I believe. Because, obviously, you know, we went through a period shortly after we got all this ready, when things didn't go so well.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, I mean, very familiar with those types of things, and I, I think that's the right time and place to do with that, because we haven't started drawings, we haven't started plans and doing those things. And, you know, until we do, there's not a whole lot to talk about it.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant?
So, like, like you said, in the phasing, phasing part of it, if, at the special use, there is some small, I mean, is that, I mean, it is, not that anybody's watching this at 10:00 at night, but I mean, you know, far as something you would say, if, if we, you would, I mean, can we place, I mean, and I know we're not to that level even at all, where, if it was, you know, and I don't know if it's 75, if it's 85, if it's 90, whatever, where it was done in four phases or something, I mean, I know that wouldn't be tonight, but that, I mean, can we say that at the special use phase?
Conceivably, again, depending upon the evidence that's presented, but remember, quasi judicial proceeding, if the applicant presents a prima facie case, that means they, they've carried their burden, they, they've met all the requirements, and there is no opposition presenting evidence that overcomes the applicant's evidence, then you are required, first of all, to approve the, the special use permit, we now call it under new 160D in the general statutes. But, yes, you can place reasonable, conditions reasonably related to use of the property on the, on the special use permit. Again, you're going to be able to have justification from the evidence presented during the course of the hearing.
And if we don't have good justifications, we can...
Well, it could be subject to challenge in the courts, certainly.
Well, the other thing is to...
But if, go ahead. But if you have the school superintendent stand up and say, this is what we can absorb, that would, I would assume that would be competent.
I think that could be deemed competent evidence, certainly.
The other thing, I believe Ms., Ms. Tammy Glave said, was the, and, and that's part of the UDO, correct me if I'm wrong, is if something was rezoned to a single family, and then the property beside it's GB, or whatever it is, there's, the difference between the properties, there's buffers are required in the UDO, correct?
There is, based upon what you have, and the severity of the difference. We have agricultural between, and like Tammy, I don't have it all memorized either, but it says, you got to be this far, and you got to plant this many trees, and you got to have this type of classification of buffer between these types of properties. I mean, we could take a minute and look that up, if we, if we wanted to. I don't have those resources available, but...
Any more questions for the applicant? Any more, okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing, and I have no one signed up for public hearing, is there anyone here in the audience that did not sign up, that wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and ask this board for a motion.
Before we make a motion, I just want, under the conditional zoning, it says it's a tool that helps guide development to align with the community values and character recognized in official adopted plans, so I think we need to be mindful why conditional zoning was put there in the first place. It's like Commissioner Jarvis said, it's not only to protect the people buying property in there, but also the surrounding property also.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question to the county manager? The, so, if, and like I said, I believe they stated at the beginning that he has a contract to purchase, but, you know, doesn't own it yet, so, but if he purchased that Friday, and then he, it's, it's, and he wanted to develop it as ag, he can still put, we're not going to say, sorry, I'm away from my mic, I saw Deb sign. So, i- if he purchased, he closed Friday, and then he wanted to just develop it as ag, and develop homes, I mean, he could put 50 to 60 homes on it regardless, and wouldn't have to do anything.
You, you mean if it was not rezoned tonight?
No, I'm saying, if he just purchased it and built, and built homes on it...
Yeah, as it is right now.
Right, as ag.
Yeah, if he has development rights, in agricultural, you have development rights to put single-family dwellings.
Build on them now, yes.
Six, just ballpark 60 homes.
Say 50 to 60.
Fifty, okay.
Okay, I think you got any more comment? Okay, I, well, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, I'm going to move that, move to deny PB 2117 because the application is inconsistent with the following policies of the land use plan, LUP policy HN1, policy HN3, policy CD4, the request is not reasonable and not in the public interest, because without a master plan submitted, with the condition of the zoning request, it is not possible to verify consistency with zoning map amendment review standards of the UDO, including, including is consistent with goals, objectives, and policies of land use plan, other application of county adopted plans, is in conflict with any provisions of the UDO current county code of ordinances, is compatible with existing proposed uses surrounding land, subject to the application, and is the appropriate zoning district and uses for land would result in a logical and orderly development pattern, and would result in significant adverse impacts on the natural environment, including but not limited water, air, noise, stormwater management, wildlife, vegetation, wetlands, and natural functioning of the environment. There are school capacity concerns within the Moorea, Charlisle Central Elementary Schools at 122 capacity, conditions should be agreed upon to protect and conserve the wetlands for the important role they play in absorbing floodwaters, filtering pollutants, and stormwater runoff, and without, without conditions, potential conflict may occur with uses permitted in the GB and ZF, SFM zoning districts, possible examples of this include parking lots, bars, nightclubs, lounges, pawn shops, and the GB district, and civic culture clear cutting is in the SFM area. The USA CE Clean Water Act does not prohibit the cutting of vegetation trees above the ground surface, there is significant tree coverage in the conservation area. The con- the conventional rezoning request results in a substantial density increase for the property which is allowed in the current, excuse me, above, which is allowed in the current AG zoning district, is in a sparsely developed area, approximately one unit per acre of the county. That's my motion.
Second.
I have a second, do we have any discussion?
I didn't get that sheet, can I see that sheet?
Sorry, my apologies.
No, you can.
Right now, we have a motion and a second from Commissioner Etheridge on this. Any discussions? Count, ask for a vote, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries forward two. Thank you. All right. Move on to the next, let me get mine. The next item on the public hearings is item D, PB 21-16, Curta County Housekeeping Text Amendment, Request to amend the Curta County Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Two, to correct a reference related to minor subdivisions, Chapter Four, to correct terminology from use permit to special use permit, and Chapter Six, to correct the general statute reference for consistency with the GS 160D update, and I believe we have Ms. Turner presenting this.
That's correct, thank you again, Mr. Payman, and you pretty much did the whole presentation reading.
Right.
This is a pretty simple text amendment, just a simple housekeeping amendment, as you stated, and so, in reviewing some of the ordinance language recently, I did notice a, an issue with a reference related to minor subdivisions, so that's corrected, and then with the 160D update that you heard earlier this year, there were a couple pages that didn't get in there, and so this clarifies, or corrects those pages with respect to the terminology of special use permit, as well as a, a reference to the general statute in 160D. You're familiar with the text amendment review standards, I know, and so, staff suggests that the text amendment is consistent with the 2006 land use plan policy HN8, to protect the county's tax base and ensure long-term viability of the county's neighborhoods and housing stock. The county will continue to enforce appropriate construction and site development standards for residential developments, and this text amendment is required by the recent changes to 160D, the modernization of the entire body of state laws on local planning and development regulation, and staff and the planning board recommend approval. Any questions?
Any questions for staff?
Get this approved.
You should have slid up earlier.
Oh, public hearing, sorry, yep. Get it up, sir, that's the way you're here.
Okay, all right, then, hearing none, no other questions, I'm going to open up the public hearing portion of this. We have no one signed up, anybody in the audience would like to come up and discuss this matter? Wait, look in the audience, I don't see no one, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 21-16, because the request is consistent with policy HN8 of the 2006 land use plan, and is required by the recent changes to GS 160-D.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, do we have any discussions on this?
Can I look at this real quick? I didn't get this sheet neither.
That's what happens when you show up late.
I'm sorry for cutting my mic off.
When you're tardy?
Yeah.
And you don't turn on your mic.
I cut my mic off, so they took my sheet at the recess.
You all have need of no basis.
I guess I am.
All right, any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you. The next item we have, before we hear, is under new business, is item A, Consent Agenda.
Need for approval?
Motion for approval, the second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously, ask for a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, and discussion for adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, thank you everyone, for a great meeting.